All right, everybody, we're going to call the regular meeting to order. Thank you all for being here this, uh, this date, October 22nd. Where are we at? Okay, so if you would stand with me, we'll do the silent evocation and then the pledge of allegiance. Amen. The pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move into city reports, and I have the, uh, I'm on tap doing city reports today, so I've just got a couple of updates for you that I'd like to share. Wanted to thank Senator Dave Cortezzi for visiting, uh, this afternoon over at the Reach Out Food Pantry at St. Catherine's, came by to take a look at, uh, what was happening there and hear more and learn more about what they're doing and the need that they have as far as the amount of food that is necessary to, uh, to serve our community the way they do. I'd also like to thank Assemblymember Hellerin for the proclamation that she delivered to us back on October 2nd for our Healthy Morgan Hill Initiative. We were grateful to receive that. Like many of you had talked about last week, I too attended the, uh, the Mohai Food and Wine Event, which was a very successful event, about 600, 650 people who attended. Money raised, of course, for the Morgan Hill Unified School District. Uh, been working with farmers, ranchers, and winery owners regarding the county's, um, efforts, uh, their proposed amendments, uh, so have been working with them, coordinating with some of the, uh, county supervisors to make visits and to have conversations, uh, with, uh, their farmers, ranchers, and winery owners. So, uh, we have a lot of work to do in that area for, uh, for help with some of those folks, so we're working on that. Also, uh, the attended Sunday Health Fair at St. Catherine's and then a Wellness Fair over at Fifth Element Gym. Again, had a chance to talk about the Healthy Morgan Hill Initiative, uh, that we have, uh, that we've rolled out back in May. And then real quickly, tomorrow night, if you're around and can be downtown from 4:00 to 7:30, it's a Pumpkins on Third Street event, uh, down there at the Third and Depot area, Pumpkin Patch, vendors, pet costume contest, music, trick or treat, great family event. So, if you're available and around, join us down there tomorrow night. That does it for my report. I'd like to now turn to the city manager, Christina.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the community, and my teammates that are here this evening. I have a few announcements for you. Um, first, I am excited to welcome Vicki Rossi, our new deputy city clerk. Uh, she previously worked with us as a business assistant, and she supported engineering, land development, and development services. We'll have her formal introduction at an upcoming meeting with additional new hires and promotions. Please join me in welcoming Vicki. All right, Halloween is coming soon, and the 2025 Haunt has 25 homes participating in the home decorating contest for ultimate bragging rights. The judges were out last weekend, and the winners will be announced soon. You can view the participating homes on a map on our website, and the program is sponsored by Morgan Hill Wine Trolley, and proceeds from ticket sales from their trolley tours benefit Morgan Hill Parks and Recreation, which we're excited about. Um, next, I wanted to just, uh, share a little bit about Open Studios. The 5th Annual Morgan Hill Open Studios Art Show takes place this weekend, October 25th and 26th. As a special preview, the Calibri Art Gallery is currently exhibiting a piece from each participating artist and hosting an artist's reception this evening. During the reception, a representative from Supervisor Arenas's office will once again recognize the Library Culture and Arts Commission with a commendation for its continued support of the arts in Morgan Hill. And to explore the artists and plan your visit, you can go on to www.morganhillopenstudios.org. A little bit about upcoming meetings. Our next regular meeting is, uh, Wednesday, November the 5th, uh, for, and that's a regular city council meeting, and then after that, on November the 10th, that's a Monday in the morning, we're going to have a special meeting, and that's a facilitated council session. Um, we will have an outside facilitator, and we'll be discussing norms and ethics policy. Uh, and so that is for our, uh, our mayor and our four council members, and it is a notice community meeting, so, uh, wanted to make sure that the crowd was aware of that, and then we'll follow with the November 19th meeting. And at this point, I'd like to welcome up Edith Ramirez, Assistant City Manager for Development Services. This evening, we're going to recognize a group of people, um, that are our first graduates in the Small Business and Entrepreneurship Cohort Class. Uh, they graduated on October 2nd. Edith, take it away.
Good evening, council, teammates, and members of the public. Edith Ramirez, Assistant City Manager for Development Services. I am so proud to introduce this very small celebration we're going to hold today. Just to provide a quick context, the city approved an economic mobility strategy called Elevate Morgan Hill. As part of that, in recognition that we want to support our small businesses and in particular our Spanish-speaking community, the city put together a program to advance business entrepreneurship classes. We are doing this in partnership with Renaissance, and today is a big moment for us. We are celebrating the gra- our very first graduating class. So not only a big milestone for us as a city, doing this effort that we are leading, again, in partnership with, with Renaissance, but also we're doing it with our Spanish-speaking community, us coming out of the gate. And tonight you have, uh, tonight we're going to celebrate those that are graduating from our class. So first and foremost, I would like to, once again, recognize and appreciate, uh, the partnership that we have with Renaissance. I'll ask Renaissance staff to stand up. Um, and I would also like to recognize the effort of our, uh, Economic Development Team, Matt Mayhood, and in particular Brittany Sherman, that has been putting a lot of effort behind this. So Brittany and Matt, thank you. And without further ado, Mr. Mayor, I would like to invite you to come down, and what we're going to do is we're going to hand out certificates to this graduating class. So I will invite the graduates to come and join us. They're going to be handed a certificate, and after that, I think we have one of the representatives that will say a few words.
Thank you, Christina.
Okay, uh, hello, good evening, everyone. We have Alba Ortiz. Alba? Cesar Blas. Emiliano Martinez. Gloria Aguilera. Jaime Don Tiberos. Javier Rivera. Leopoldo René Santos. Lucy López. María Dios Dado. Mary Cruz Ruiz. Miguel Ángel González. Minerva Naranjo. Yulisa España.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for participating and being a part of this program. Thank you to Renaissance and, uh, to our staff as well. I think that we're going to get a picture. Would you like to say a few words as well? We have one of, one of the graduates is going to, and who is that individual? Who's the, the one? Miguel? Oh, right here, that wasn't a far walk.
Eduardo Munoz.
Congratulations.
María Al Consuelo Reyes.
Congratulations to you.
All right, uh, just I want to say, thank you, everyone, for being here. My name is Miguel González. Um, this is a great experience, and these 10 weeks, uh, coming with all my partners, I want to call partners, because everyone they starting their own business. I start my business already for years, and I just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity you bring this to, um, the community. I hope you bring more, 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 um, uh, I don't know how you're going to call this, um, service for, for the community, Hispanic community, not only for Hispanic, but a lot of people, they want to, like, start a business. And I want to say thank you too for Renaissance, for this opportunity to learn everything, uh, like, uh, in my own business is, I want to say for economic, how I can administrate in my business. It's, I'm glad, I'm really glad that you guys bring all this for my people. I call my people because it's like a family when we was in school. Thank you very much, and just I want to say thank you very much.
Thank you. And real quickly, to your point, we will be doing this again, and that'll be occurring in mid-January, both in English and Spanish. So we're going to be continuing this program over and over again. Thank you so much. Absolutely. God bless you guys. Oh, get a good picture.
Y para los graduados, ahorita la ciudad va a seguir con una programación acerca de vivienda y desarrollo económico. Se pueden quedar o se pueden ir, pero aquí vamos a seguir con la plática y con la junta de desarrollo económico y vivienda.
Christina, you, your report over?
That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That was a great report, right there. Uh, next report is from, uh, our city attorney, Dawn.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my son is exciting, but council did meet in closed session immediately before this meeting, and there was no report of action.
Very good. Thank you, Dawn. Any other, any other reports? Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to share, I don't know that I shared, I attended the CARE 30th anniversary, and that was a great honor to do. That was held in Santa Clara. I also, on the 10th, attended the Champions for Change, which is by the labor unions, and they had a anniversary as well, um, celebrating all the work that their different organizations have done to bring higher wages and working, good working conditions for their members. Um, on the 19th, Congresswoman Zoe Lofgren held her barbecue that she does every year at the Coyote Ranch, right here between Morgan Hill and San Jose, and that was lots of fun with the family and got to see a lot of good people there. Um, on, then we had just yesterday, I think it was, it feels like it was far away, but I don't think it was, it was just yesterday, the Britten Gym has been renovated, and, um, it looks absolutely beautiful. I played basketball in there and, uh, went to Britten with all of my sisters and was coached by Coach Green, and then my girls have been coached by Coach Green. It was really something cool, so we got to sign, get one of the, his autographed, um, bleachers, and he has his name right on the gym floor. It, it was really cool, so if you are a Bobcat, go and check that out. And this was all done with Measure G funds for the school district, so really, really a great celebration for the kids and getting them a facility that they deserve. Um, I also wanted to highlight our Assemblymember Gil Hellerin. All of the legislation that was signed, that was sent to the governor's desk by Assemblymember Hellerin was signed, and that's huge. Um, so congratulations to her and her team. And then today, I had my Valley Water Commission meeting where we were talking about water rates and what goes into the water rates. They're talking about now doing some community meetings to give that information to people so that they understand. It was really pretty interesting to understand all of that. Yesterday as well, the county, um, went ahead and approved, the Board of Supervisors have a pru- approved a resolution will be coming forward where they will not be, um, allowing any immigration or ICE efforts to be happening on any county property, and that was also a really great, um, effort that's been made, so thank you.
Very good. Anyone else with a report? There being none? Very good. We'll move on to the next item. Next item is public comments. It's opportunities for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to make comments on the agenda, that, uh, please wait until those items come up, uh, on the agenda. So Vicki, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mayor, we have two speakers.
Okay.
First speaker is Greg Velios.
Evening, honorable public servants. My name is Greg Velios. I'm from Gilroy. At the end of this, in less than two weeks, we're having an election coming up, and this is... Wait, in less than two weeks, we have an election coming up? Important Measure A is on the ballot. I know you've heard of this, and we, we've discussed this at Gilroy City Council. I want to bring this measure to you right now. Things are not normal. There has been a tremendous cut to, uh, funding for the county health programs, the medical services, right here in Valley Health Center on DePaul. We'll be having major cuts to services. This is something that, being that I know the, the city council is concerned about everyone in their, in their, in their city, in my vision, 23% of this, of the, of Morgan Hill residents are on either Medi-Cal, which is the California version of Medicaid, offering, uh, specialized, um, health insurance to the disabled chi- uh, children, uh, elderly and low income, or they're on Medicare. 23%. Now, the population of Morgan Hill is 45,000, 46,000, according to the last census data, so that means that almost 11,000 of your residents who are on Medi-Cal or Medicare are having to deal with reduced services possibly because of this, this abnormal situation where funding has been cut to the vet, to the, to the county health services. This is something that I just want everyone to be aware of, that, I know this is important, and people say, "Well, no," it's, it's, yes, it is a tax. And people hear the word "taxed," and they panic. Correct. Under normal circumstances, we would hate to have had, we were fortunate to have Santa Clara County Supervisors realizing the importance of this, uh, decrease in funding and then, and the effects that it would have on the health of the population, so they had to put this measure on the ballot. So please, you see, you talk to a lot of people, and for the people you talk to, please let them know that this is an important measure, and if indeed, and, and I'm sure you care indeed, this is, if, if health and medical care is a priority to you, please, please vote for this measure. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dimitri.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Dimitri Nowakowski. I'm with EcoGreen Solutions. We are an energy service partner company certified by the Department of Energy, and we're also a trade professional for the Pacific Gas and Electric Company. We represent several energy efficiency programs available for the city, and currently I'm here to talk about well-known ONBIL finance program by PG&E. Um, ONBIL finance program, or OBF program, is an energy efficiency program that helps cities implement energy upgrades at no additional costs, upgrade the facilities like lights, HVC, parts of motors, um, mechanical equipment, uh, with no additional budget, no money out of the pocket. All the project costs, all the equipment, all the upgrades, and the labor is fully offset by the generated savings. And this program has been implemented through the energy service partners like us, like EcoGreen, that's why I'm here. And our role as a partner is not only to get those funds from PG&E for the city, but also to initiate the process, providing you with the energy audit, which is also at no cost to the city. Um, and this energy audit report has, contains all the information about the proposed improvements of the equipment, as well, there's calculated savings, um, uh, processed and approved by PG&E. Uh, this program is really popular, specifically in North California. We have, uh, dozens of, uh, projects right now with the cities, with the counties, and, uh, with school districts, and it was fueled specifically by California Bill 2208 that, as you know, bans all the fluorescent lights. So in addition to the savings, and you know, PG&E raising their bills every year, you also, the city can benefit with getting, basically getting rid of all the old fluorescent bulbs, uh, replacing them with the high-efficient LEDs. Um, just to summarize, I'm here to, um, remind you about this program and to request the meeting, uh, so we can walk you through the program in detail and discuss the potentially complimentary energy audit for the city. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
No, Mayor.
Very good. We'll close the public comment, move on to the adoption of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda.
Motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
With second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, that passes unanimously. Uh, we are now going to move into the other business. We have two really meaty items that we're going to be talking about tonight, and what I'd like to do, we, again, and there's a lot of information here, I want to make sure that we don't feel rushed, but we do have two items that we want to make sure to get to. So what I'd like to propose to the council is that we spend about an hour and a half on the first item, get through that as best we can, then get into the second item so that we have a chance to cover both items, and then where we have room and opportunity, we'll, we can come back and forth and, and talk about, uh, something that, you know, again, maybe, maybe we didn't have a chance to get to. Now, we want to dig deeper on some of the items that are presented. We can always move some of those items to a future, uh, a future council meeting, or even set up another meeting to go deeper on some of these, on some of these items. So keep that in mind as we go forward. What we'll end up doing is in each, like, in a normal council meeting, we'll have a presentation from the staff, we'll have clarifying questions, uh, and then we'll go to public comment, and then we'll come back, and when we have the council discussion, that'll be more of a free-flowing, we're not going to limit that to just like 15, but we're going to have a free-flowing discussion around that. So more opportunity for some questions and conversation between staff and between council members. If that sounds okay with everybody, I'll kind of track time and, and make sure we're doing okay on that. If that's good, then we'll, we'll go forward. So with that, then, thank you, council members. Uh, we will go into the first item, housing update, and here come our housing update people right here.
Good evening, council. I, I'm just going to get us started. For the housing update conversation, we know that the first question you may have is, tell us about the housing laws. Tell us about the state. And I know that we want to get into the housing program, and we will, but just, we want to spend a minute at the beginning of the presentation with Jennifer to run through kind of high-level housing laws, then we will have, uh, John Lang, our Housing and Economic Mobility Director, um, give the presentation. I want to also recognize for, um, this portion of the agenda, we also have our Housing BMR Program Administrator, Hauske is in the room, Julius is here, and we have the rest of the housing team that will be joining us. Without further ado, Jennifer?
There we go. And good evening, Mayor and council members. So legislative framework, or as I like to say, how did we get here? That's sort of the story that we tell a lot of people. The city has a general plan, and we adopted that general plan in 2016. We're about halfway through the timeline of the general plan. It was based around RDCS, which was our Resident, Residential Development Control Program, Expected Pace Development. That sort of started, we started seeing signs that things might be changing with that with the passage of SB 35. In 2019, the world went sideways in California with SB 330, which invalidated our growth control program. Um, an affordability, uh, crisis was declared, and the legislature started creating a web of laws that would focus on moving housing faster with less delay. And what it did was it took away, bit by bit, every year, local control of our housing. The laws that have been passed, there's been nearly 300 laws passed related to housing since 2019, and it has redefined local control. Local control now is essentially our ability to issue permits, establish design or objective standards for design, um, and work with applicants as they walk in the door. The laws that have been passed... The laws that have been passed prioritize ministerial approvals, which is over-the-counter, streamlining with certain time periods that guarantee approval by right. Approvals depending on what folks are bringing forward, statutory limits, and density incentives. These are just some of the key statutes that have helped reshape land use authority. SB 79 will also be added to this list. It goes in effect on July 1st of next year. Gives everyone a little bit of time to wrap our arms around that new piece of legislation. These three laws are the base of everything else that has been passed. The Housing Accountability Act is the overarching umbrella. It contains a lot of rules and regs that result in potential judicial action and fines should a city not move forward on their housing plan, which is our housing element, or individual projects. SB 330 was created to help streamline the process, guarantee approval should an application be consistent with all of our standards. And then, originally, when that law was passed, it had a sunset clause. That sunset clause was extended, and this year, this law was made permanent. Density Bonus Law is the third leg, and that allows folks to apply for extra units in their project, as well as obtain concessions and waivers, which are exemptions to our objective standards. So the question we get asked as staff most of the time is how do you deny something if it comes in the door? And essentially, there's four ways you can deny a project. But the biggest one in our city is if the project proposes a clear health and safety risk to the city. And this needs to be based on our objective standards. Studies need to be attached to those objective standards. And it's whatever is in place when the application is filed. If we come up with something later, it would not apply to the project that's walked in the door. We've also seen secret review that has been used in a lot of cities in the past. It's now often preempted by state law as well. And there are several processes that have been added that offer streamlined secret review and automatic exemptions from the law. Noncompliance does carry a risk. And we've talked a lot with you about potential fines. But I think what's even more important to understand is they built in the potential to decertify your housing element if folks aren't moving forward, haven't completed your zoning changes, which are needed, in some cities, not us, or otherwise are not adhering to the laws that are in place. On the worst potential risk is a loss of permitting authority. Huntington Beach unfortunately is on this path. They recently lost in the appeals court in September. They have 120-day deadline to get their housing element adopted, or there's a potential for receivership to be assigned, and they will lose permitting authority in their city. The state will be able to permit housing within the city of Huntington Beach. We don't know if that will happen, but they are on that path, and they would set a precedent in the state for anyone who may find themselves in that situation. Right now, the cities that have had their housing elements decertified are listed on this slide, Portola Valley, St. Helena, and the city of Norwalk. So what are the implications for Morgan Hill? We're going to see more streamlined projects, fewer public hearings, with some of the secret exemptions. We'll have less than 120 days from the date of application to approve a project, which is very, very quick. We'll have more pressure to deliver affordable housing. As part of that, we are working with the state to lobby and advocate to changes, and in some cases, no changes to the housing element process for the next cycle. There will be a formula process for the next regional housing needs update, or needs allocation numbers. And we all have ideas about how to make that better. And it's a constant balancing act between the character of the city handling our growth and the infrastructure that goes along with it. What we have seen, though, is though the general plan expected 68,000 people by the end of the general plan era in 2035, we're not even halfway to that number, but we're halfway through the timeline. And the city will continue to enforce our objective codified standards. And we're finding that the collaboration with the individual applicants, even though they have the right to waive our standards, we're seeing really strong success in getting them to work with us on designing character of projects. Not all of them do, but a lot of them listen. And between that and collaborating with state agencies, we really hope to continue to create housing that works within the city, even though change is painful and everyone's really having a struggle seeing what's under construction. So that is the legal framework. I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I'm going to turn it over to John.
Yeah, I was going to suggest we are going to run through the entire presentation before we get into Q and A. Thank you, Jennifer.
Good evening, council. John Lang. In addition to Edith commenting on who's here tonight, I do want to acknowledge our housing developers that are in the room this evening. A big part of Morgan Hill's success in building affordable housing is our development community, and want to acknowledge them being here this evening. We also have a couple of our nonprofit partners online watching, so really appreciate them being in attendance tonight. So this evening, want to talk about kind of three aspects of really the housing division, which is the housing program, affordable housing, talking about homelessness and unhoused services, and then economic mobility, which is something Edith started the evening talking about, and certainly seeing the class here receive their certificates. On the affordable housing program, really, it's grounded under five pillars. We call them the five Ps. And this has a long history, going back to the 1970s, when the city had a residential development control system. And it really is this desire to build with, have a community grow with intention. And so through that effort, as well as additional policy adoption and ordinance adoption, we are really focused on making sure we have a mix and range of housing. This council should be very proud of the fact that one in six units is deemed affordable in Morgan Hill. When you compare us to any other city in Santa Clara County, that is phenomenal. And this is really kind of the pillars of what guides our programs and our policies and our policy approach. Some of the key guiding documents that inform our approach, Jennifer touched on this, is the general plan. The general plan really is this land use document that really guides where housing can go, should go, in our community, and sets kind of the standards going forward. Locally, we adopted an inclusionary housing ordinance. I will get more into that in the presentation, but this really is the big policy driver for setting aside units in Morgan Hill that are affordable. We partner with the county on a lot of things, and one of the big things we partner on is ending homelessness. So we follow the Santa Clara County's community plan to end homelessness. In 2024, this council accepted the Elevate Morgan Hill Mobility Program. And then, we also have guidelines that we've adopted that structure how we go about doing affordable housing and making sure owners within the affordable housing have a clear path and know the guidelines for owning deed-restricted homes. This graphic is really trying to demonstrate, really, there's a range of housing and a continuum of housing that exists in Morgan Hill. And in fact, this slide is a little bit incomplete when you think about a piece that I'll talk about. But I want to focus on just really the top row. So the top row is really talking about homelessness and then getting into transitional housing. A lot of this work is done in key collaborations and partnerships. It's partnerships with our faith-based community. It's partnerships with our nonprofit community. It's partnerships with the county of Santa Clara. So on the homelessness front, we do have an unhoused specialist, Brian Melkton. He is our point of contact with the unhoused community. Brian and the work that he does works very closely with our county partners, as well as our housing developers in trying to get people into secured housing. We do activate a weather shelter, but that's the only shelter we have here in Morgan Hill. And that's done through a partnership through our faith-based providers and nonprofit. As far as transitional housing, this is people coming off of the streets or out of their cars and getting back into housing. That really is through partnerships, and partnerships through the county of Santa Clara. If we continue along the top line, the one piece that's not on there is affordable housing that is tax credit-based. There are housing projects in our community that have received state and federal tax credits. They don't follow under our affordable program. They follow under guidelines produced by the state and federal government, but they are affordable units, and that is a subset of affordable housing. On the bottom row is really housing that the private sector or developers are building. And it is the IHO, the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, that really helps dictate the two line items on the bottom left-hand corner, which is the below-market rate rental and the below-market rate homeownership. It's the IHO that creates those affordable BMR units. And then there is market rate housing. Market rate housing being rental and market rate housing being ownership. Just to put in pictures a little bit, ownership is made up of different things. There's, we have townhomes, we have condos, we have single-family homes. And really, that serves anyone that can afford it. But part of that marketplace is restricted through our BMR program. On the rental side, the product mix tends to be a little bit denser. It's also market rate, but there are units that are also income-restricted under our BMR program. And then we also partner with the county and other service providers to do other kinds of restrictions. So you will see senior restricted apartments. You'll see farmworker housing that's restricted for those that are agricultural workers or veterans. So the rental space tends to be more accommodating of different people with different backgrounds and needs. Kind of the basic verticals of the housing program, and I will do deeper dives on all of these, but these are, in essence, the four basic buckets. I talk about the IHO. The IHO is a deliberate policy by this city to say, "We want to set aside units for affordable units." And I'll get into the details of that in a coming slide. That's the policy. The program is the BMR. Once you have those units built, how do you manage those affordable units? And that is done in strong collaboration with Hauske's, our program administrator. They've been our program administrator for the last 10 years. And you can see there's almost 600 units that they are managing on a day-to-day basis, in addition to loan programs that support that. On the homeless services, we, as I said, have an unhoused specialist who is the first point of contact to our unhoused community. We also partner with South County Community Services to provide a safe parking program, which is eight units available to women and families as a way to progress towards a reentry into housing. Through that vertical, we also provide down payment assistance and rental assistance for people trying to get into housing or needing some assistance when they're in housing, might come up short in terms of bills. And then lastly, a lot of the work we do, and I can't emphasize this enough, is through partnerships and collaborations. The county office of supportive housing is extremely critical to the work we do in our community. Through that, we get funds through CDVG, Community Development Block Funds, that help support senior repairs on mobile homes or single-family homes. And there's a lot of cross-collaboration that goes on. We work with Project Sentinel, is another provider in our community that helps people with rent disputes. So our partnerships are critical to the services we provide. On the IHO, this was a policy that was adopted in 2018, and it really says, if you're building more than two units, you are going to need to set aside between 10% or 15% of those units and make them affordable. If you're in downtown, it's 10. Outside of downtown, that's 15%. We do have a carve-out, so as much as we'd like people to build the units, we did in adopting that code, allow for developers to fee out on 50% of the units. So if your requirement is to build eight units that are affordable, you could fee out on four, you have to build four. If a project is proposing a 100% fee out, that is something that comes to this council for a decision. And then, as I said earlier, there's roughly six, close to 600 units that are part of this program. And the affordable program, as I said, is a big part of the administration is through Hauske's. I referenced what guides our work, the housing element. The housing element is a chapter within the general plan. There are seven goals. Within those seven goals, there are about 45 action items the city needs to implement as part of that housing element. You've heard Jennifer talk about compliance. So when we are implementing the things we said we were going to do in our housing element, it's not just about building units. It's also about achieving some of these other things we said we were going to do. Are we going to do a new unhoused shelter? Are we going to put rental protections in place as a policy decision? Those were all action items that are also built into the housing element. One thing people often struggle with is this idea of affordability. And this table in front of you is really what dictates affordability. So this is the income limits that are associated with Santa Clara County. The red lettering really highlights where we start. So the numbers really start at the federal level, are shared with the state of California. The state of California takes those numbers and then develops these affordability charts by county. So we start with a household of four. What is the median income? And then, once you have that number, in this case, 195, 200, we can then reverse engineer by household of three, household of two, household of one, and then work up what is acutely low, extremely low, low income. But it's really, you identify the median income for a household of four to start. We also show really what is the makeup of housing. So when we talk about acutely low housing, that's not an ownership unit. That's going to be a rental unit. So you can see the mix in the table, kind of what is generally considered rental versus ownership, and then there's places where they bleed a little bit. But this is really foundation to the housing program. When we talk about what do we sell units for? What kind of rent can we charge on the rentals? It's this chart is what flows through all those calculations. To put it in a little bit of context, and you heard the speaker tonight during public comment talk about people on assistance. When you look at census data for Morgan Hill, we have a range of families that make a lot of money. We also have a range of families that do not make a lot of money. And what this chart is showing you is that we have families, according to census information for our community, that as a household, they fall into the extremely low-income category. And in this case, there's 2,100 families that are identified as extremely low-income. So if you take their income and what they can afford, the number of units that are available and designated as extremely low-income is 130 units. You have more families than units that are rented at that level. This is what this chart is showing. We have that analysis for very low and low. In the staff report, but not in the presentation, the chart does go into talking about market rate. So when you look at the number of market rate, which is over 12,000 units relative to 7,000 families, we have way more market rate than... There's not a one-to-one match, right? So this is where there's a little bit of a disconnect. And that's why having an affordability program is really important. I also wanted to put in context, how does our housing align with the jobs that are in this community? You're going to hear about economic development and the importance of economic development, but there's also a recognition of what do the local jobs pay here? And this is a random sampling of different jobs, and you can see the employers. This is all publicly available data. And what it shows is a dental assistant working at a local dental office makes $51,000. If you're a household of one, you're a single person, you'd be considered very low-income in this community. And you just saw the mismatch of how many units are available at very low income And you just saw the mismatch of how many units are available at very low income versus what's available, right? So we could do this for a lot of different job descriptions, but you can see, the people that are occupying jobs here are going to struggle with meeting and having housing needs met here. RENA, as part of the the housing cycle, we have been given these targets or these goals in different affordability level categories. So we're currently in the sixth cycle, and we have to, based upon our goal, build a little over 1,000 units, broken down by those affordability categories. You can see to date what we have permitted. This is building permits, so this is stuff that's coming out of the ground. We are on track overall to meet the big number, the 1,037. However, it's not just about meeting the total number, it's actually about meeting each one of those line items, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. Above moderate is market rate. It's it's open to the market. So if you look at low, we've actually exceeded that category. We're actually doing better. But on the very low, we're still behind, and that is a product category that is challenging, and that's where we need partnerships. What's in the pipeline? Lots of housing, this is just a sampling of the housing that's currently in the pipeline. You will see a majority of the housing that's being built in this community is ownership housing. This is people paying a mortgage in the community. We do have some rental that's still coming online, but a majority of the units we continue to permit are ownership units. Wanted to talk about rental. For a long time, there was not a lot of rental housing being built. It wasn't until more recently that we started to see more rental product come online. So over the last couple of years, we have had three pretty significant rental projects come online, including the Village at Madrone, Real Oak Village, and the senior restricted housing on Monterey. Want to talk a little bit about our unhoused community support and touch on these verticals a little bit. This is Brian Miletin, if you don't know. He is our unhoused specialist. Brian's job is to be out in the field every day and engage with our unhoused community, and whether that be trying to provide them housing services or other kinds of supportive services. We encourage the community, if you see an unhoused individual, call Brian. We are actively working, trying to get people into housing or rehoused. And we do have a multifaceted approach, as I already highlighted. One, Brian is trying to build trust with individuals and get them to be engaged. Oftentimes, the first time out, people don't want to engage. It takes multiple efforts to engage with folks, and he's trying to build trust as a way for them to provide some information. And there is a coordinated entry system, and this is critically important. If we want people to get housed, they need to go in through what's called the VI SPDA. It's a vulnerability index that the county manages. Those inputs go in, and then people are selected from that and put into housing. So that is the first step to rehousing people. So it's critically important, Brian, build trust to do that assessment, so it gives people pathway back into housing. And I did touch on, it's also very important for the last slide. A lot of the work we do is in partnership with our faith-based community. The county has been gracious in providing some funds to the St. Vincent de Paul to provide rent assistance or deposit assistance, but those funds continue to decline each year. That is kind of a critical pathway. People that are working poor can generally do first month rent, they can't do the deposit, or they can't do the second month's rent. So having the ability to provide that gets people into housing. The point-in-time account occurred earlier this year in January. The number of unhoused or temporarily sheltered people in Morgan Hill was 69. You can see that was a decrease from the 2023 account. And then want to move into economic mobility, this is kind of the third leg of the stool for for the housing division. This effort, the mobility effort, really arose out of our work developing the housing element. Going through that exercise in developing the housing element really started to showcase we have some areas where we can improve and better engage with our community. And through that exercise, we started a journey with ICMA, International City County Managers' Association, on really trying to get a handle on economic mobility. And it was really that genesis and early grant that really blossomed into what became the Elevate Morgan Hill Report. And just tonight, we saw one of the goals of that report is creating a entrepreneurship program, and specifically creating an entrepreneurship program for our Spanish-speaking community. It is a, it's wonderful to see, and that is what the Elevate program is about. We are in the process of onboarding a new Economic Mobility Program Officer. We received funding from ICMA to bring on a person for 30 months to start to advance the over 15 goals we created under the Elevate MV program. And then, kind of closing out, just to be aware of some of the issues we're seeing. Morgan Hill has, for a very long time, been a leader in developing affordable housing, and that really started in the RDCS process. The RDCS process effectively got started almost 50 years ago, and doing affordable homes really started about 30 years ago in the RDCS process. Those homes, those deed restrictions are now expiring. So what we are seeing are more homes coming off the books than more homes coming on the books in terms of being deed restricted. So this roughly 600 units of affordable restricted housing is going to start on a downward climb. That will even out, but we are now starting to get to these 30-year deed restrictions that are now coming off the books. So we are going to lose affordable housing more than we're gaining affordable housing. I did mention St. Vincent de Paul. That is an area where we just don't have a strong sense of funding, and the funding continues to decline. Last year, that funding supported 43 people getting into housing just by being able to pay a month's rent. It's it's a very important thing, and unfortunately, there just are not a lot of financial resources to support it. Did want to touch on this. Earlier this year, in 2025, there was an exemption that finally was removed due to some bills that went through the legislature a couple of years ago, and this is really impacting our manufactured homes or our mobile homes. And the law change was, in essence, it exempted any mobile homeowner, coach owner, that had a, an agreement with the park longer than 12 months. You'd be exempted from any rate changes. All of those long-term agreements no longer provide shield, so now everyone is subject to rate increases. We've now just seen a recent rent hearing as a result of that. It's possible we will start to see more of that with that change. And then just, I'll touch on this last bullet point. As you can see, we're doing very well on meeting our RENA goals, but one of the hardest categories is the extremely low income, and that really only gets achieved through partnership and multiple funding streams typically. So that's the county putting money in, the city putting money in, and working with generally a nonprofit developer to make that happen. That is going to be an area I think we will continue to be challenged. I want to be clear, that is generally a challenging area for all cities. It is the hardest product type to kind of bring to market. And then just to give you a sense of breadth of the things we've committed to through different policy actions. I mentioned the housing element. So in addition to meeting RENA goals, there's 47 actions that housing and planning are working on implementing, and some of that's policy, some of that is zoning change. There's a lot of work there that needs to be completed. On the mobility framework, we have, just in the housing section, we have 12 initiatives we're solving for. We recently got money from ABAG related to transit-oriented, transit-oriented communities, and we have obligations to implement certain policies as a result of that grant. And then certainly, we continue to learn from our affordability program, our IHO, and we need to continue to tweak things as we learn from different experiences. So with that, I will conclude and take your questions. Thank you very much.
Very good. Appreciate that presentation, and a little word up to the council. Any clarifying questions that you'd like to ask? Please feel free, anyone have any questions? I know there's a lot to kind of go through here. Councilmember Iwanaga?
Thank you, John. That was a great presentation. Can you just elaborate a little bit more about the mobile home park situation? What exactly is that going to mean to people that live in those communities?
So I will, so we do have one park that is owned by a nonprofit, and it's really community-owned, and I don't think that will be as impactful. We do have a couple other mobile home parks that are owned by a private person or entity. And once again, typically, in a mobile home park or manufactured home park, a lot of the residents have been there a very long time, and they may have, a decade earlier, entered into a 12-month lease, and they just keep renewing that 12-month lease. That has shielded them from any rate changes. And under the state law, the provision, it basically said, if you had a lease longer than that or up to 12 months, you were exempt from that. And now, the state law removed that provision. And so it does mean owners that may have been shielded from that for a very long time are now subject to a rent increase. Now, we do have a rent stabilization ordinance in this community. I'm not trying to be doom and gloom. There is a process that needs to be followed. If a park owner wants to submit something greater than what's allowed under the code, we have to conduct a rent hearing. But it does mean, if that rent hearing is successful and they can demonstrate that they need to make a fair market return, which our code allows, this could mean increases for many more of the individuals living there.
And just to clarify, I don't think the new law has any impact on our own rent control ordinance, so I don't actually think, I think our our rent, our mobile home rent stabilization ordinance is is fully enforceable and intact, so it shouldn't have any impact on Morgan Hill.
Sorry, one more question, John. You you mentioned we have obligations regarding the, I want to see the ABGS. Thank you. You mentioned at the very end, yeah, the ABAGs. What are some of those obligations we have?
Sure. So part of that study was, so transit-oriented communities is trying to look at, obviously, housing near transit is one aspect, but some of the provisions we're looking at specifically, not rent stabilization, but rent protection kinds of things as a condition of grant. So ABAG is putting together template ordinances that they are encouraging local jurisdictions to adopt that support and further fair housing. So part of this process is is looking at those ordinances, maybe making tweaks as it relates to Morgan Hill specifically and keeping in in character with what we're doing here, but it's adopting certain policies like that. So we haven't seen a lot of it in this community yet, but if you look at communities that are a little more built out, what you're seeing is established housing being demolished, people being dislocated to build bigger housing. Because the only way you can get more housing is you have to demolish some of the housing. So there's other types of ordinances that go into place, and this is kind of leading into that effort. So there are a couple requirements as far as that grant, and that's work that we're partnering with the planning department on looking and bringing forward back to council at a future date.
Thanks, John.
Councilmember Lebers?
Thank you. That was a great report. Thank you for everything. When you talk about they might be demolishing houses and there's more things coming, do there, are there dates that we are aware of that they'll be done with all these different things they're going to add on to the list, or is it just when they, you know, once a month decide something and let us know about it?
No, the the grant is fairly straightforward. It gives you a list of things to pick from. So we're looking at things that make the most sense. It's not, this is the only thing you can do. It's generally four different things you can do, and once again, you can modify as appropriate to maintain the character. But it was, a condition of this grant is to explore that as part of moving forward with our efforts in transit-oriented connection and community. So these are things that obviously council will be able to chime in when we bring them forward and and find where that best fit is.
Okay, so is everything forward that we, even though you haven't presented it to us yet, is every, do you have everything already that you need? Or will there still be more surprises coming?
There's not necessarily more surprises. A couple of the, a couple of the model templates are not done.
Okay.
So that, we're waiting on that information. It's, they're being rolled out in phases, so some of the things that we are looking at haven't arrived yet. We know what the general buckets are that we need to solve. We just don't have that model template yet. So that is coming. It's not going to be a surprise, it's just not available to us.
And so, and what is the time period that they will finish this all up?
The grant was going through 2026, so we would, we would be bringing this stuff in in 2026 back to council.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Vega?
Okay, sorry, this might be a silly question, but I just want to clarify something. So in the report, you use homeless and unhoused. Is there a difference, or is it the same?
I'm using them interchangeably.
Okay. And then also, you talked about the farm housing, farmworker housing. What does that mean? I mean, who qualifies? Let's say there's an employee that works at Driscoll's, but he's an engineer. Does that make him a farmworker?
So if you worked in the agricultural industry, you were considered farmworker.
In any position?
That is my knowledge. If you were working within the agricultural industry, you were considered eligible for that unit.
Okay, and then another question. Is it legally for us to only house a certain profession in a certain area?
So why? So that's an excellent question. So I wouldn't say it's necessarily a, when we think about like veteran housing, farmworker housing, a lot of that is a stipulation around where the funding came from.
Okay.
So we're using specific funds from the federal government to do veteran housing. So there is a set aside that says this needs to be veteran housing. Yeah, senior housing. So it it's generally dictated by the funding stream. We're not randomly just picking and choosing. It's the funding makeup that builds the project and says 12 of those units need to be for this particular category.
So if there's, let's say, if there's nobody else applying for farmworker housing, but we have apartments or townhomes available for other people that can qualify for, are we making exceptions, or no, it has to be exactly that?
So in the case of the very specific project we're talking about, they don't have a vacancy issue, they're actually full. Managers need to be very careful because you are audited on who's occupying, and you go through certification efforts. So they would be at risk of their funding if they're doing different makeup, or they don't get clear guidance that they can do that. So when you have multiple funding stacks in a project, you generally want to be compliant with what the funds say it needs to be set aside for. In our BMR program, we may have a little more flexibility of, if the unit's not, if this particular unit's not available, you can do this unit. this particular unit's not available, you can do this unit instead. When there's dedicated funding, it's a little more difficult.
Okay. And then so, okay. And do we have a limit of how long they can live there or is it like just until? Is there like a timeline, like you can only live here for a year or this is only available for two years, so it doesn't matter? As long as they're in their industry?
So, so there's a couple of things that happen. It's often in these income, so there's the industry you're working in, let's say farm worker, but there's also an income limit. So if you start to exceed that income limit, you're no longer, on the renewal, you're no longer going to be able to stay there. And this is pretty consistent. Also in our, in our below market rate rental program, if you start to exceed income limits, the next cycle, you will be asked to go to another unit that's more market rate. So there are income restrictions that generally result in someone being asked to move to a market rate unit. It's not necessarily, you know, you could be there in perpetuity so long as the payments are being made and you meet those conditions.
Okay. And is there a percentage or do you know the percentage of the people that are living there? How many of them actually came from Morgan Hill? How many of them came from another city?
I do, I, for the particular farm worker project, I do not have that data.
And then you used restricted after a couple of things. What does that mean, restricted?
So when I refer to restriction, it is typically income restriction. So in our BMR program, it's, you have to be within that band of income. And if you exceed it, you're no longer at that affordability level and you would not be able to basically apply or rent a unit. So it's 99% of the time referencing income.
Okay. And by the way, thank you so much for spelling out all the acronyms. It made my job so much easier. So thank you, thank you. And giving me more history and I made the report and my reading time was like cut by half. Thank you. And that's it for right now.
Yeah, I want to tag on to something she said. Can I go?
Sure, sure. Yeah.
I, I want to just tag on to something, a question that she asked you that I didn't get a clear answer for. And that was, you said, right now, our farm unit, farm worker units are all full, so we don't have to worry about that. Well, we're building a five-story monstrosity downtown Morgan Hill for farm workers. Okay. What if all those units don't fill? Because this is going to open up a lot of housing for that field. And do they leave them empty? Or do they bring in other kind of workers? Or do they import people from different areas? Because I don't know if you're going to fill all that.
Yeah, so you're talking about the, the Magnolias project. It's a 66-unit project.
Okay.
I apologize. I don't have all the breakdown, but in that project, I want to say it's maybe 14 farmer per units. I think that's, if I recall.
Is that the five-story one? Yeah.
There's also going to be veteran housing as well as rapid rehousing.
Yeah, what's that?
So rapid rehousing is individuals that are transitioning back, back into housing. So it's people that generally have recently lost their housing or have been in transition between being unhoused, being in a shelter, and then getting into more permanent housing. That's rapid rehousing. So once again, the, the unit mix is based upon the funding stack that went into that project. So a lot of money went into that project from the county and the county is identifying that, that funding stack. And those requirements related to farm worker housing, they're also getting federal funds supporting veteran housing.
I'm going to move on. I'm going to go on to Councilmember Martinez-Beltran.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Team, I appreciate this. This is, this is great. And this is why I was asking if we could have this workshop. I mean, even for me, Jennifer, you hit it on the head. I mean, looking at all this and reading this, I can't even believe we've been through all of this. So there's a lot to know and I think it's important for us of our new council to get that background so that we all are kind of on the same page as we're moving forward because there's so much more that's coming at us. But I want, if we could, I would like to look at, my questions are, if we could look at RENA for a second. I wanted to look at our buckets and I don't know the, the page number that it's on. I just took pictures as the slide was up. But we talked about in there, it looks like the extremely low income is labeled, I don't see that on the select, two slides later. I'm not sure. Can you just do?
In that particular chart is kind of folded under the very low income, right? So that's why you didn't see it in that particular chart.
Yeah, so there's two, there's this one and then I think if you go two down, there's extremely low income. So you're saying they're together?
For the purpose of RENA, for the purpose of RENA, we're looking at that chart and that's what we're accounting for. For the purpose of learning about the needs in the community and what are the income levels, what kind of housing we have, that other chart was part of the economic mobility report.
Okay, okay. So that is not necessarily interchangeable with this because that's where I was getting confused. So if we're looking at this, well, let's go, if we go back to the other chart with the needs. Okay, so we have, you're saying here in our community, we're finding that we have such a need of the 2,135, but we only have 6% available. I would say probably that and the very low income are, would be the RENA bucket, correct? So we really need to get maybe 45% of that. Or we're really at a need of 45% of housing from, that we don't, we don't have. It's unavailable to our residents.
The way that I would answer that, council member, is that we as a city may never find ourselves matching all the needs that the community has. It might be unattainable. I think that for us, we want to have this information so that it informs our policymaking. But when we are looking at what drives our recommendation to you on a project is for us is meeting the RENA. And that is primarily what we see as the closest path to local, as, as if you could, if you want to call it local control. Jennifer said, well, there's not a whole lot of local control left in reality. But it does matter to us as a city if we meet our RENA and that is our laser focus. Meeting the families that have extremely low income needs, I think to me, it informs also the fact that every day in the office, Brian and John and, and the rest of our housing team are focused on serving those people that are tittering on being able to stay in-house or not. I mentioned last time, I think, that our Morgan Hill Unified School District has 1,000 students that are housing insecure.
That's right.
So for us, nobody in any community wants to see homeless or unhoused on the street. We don't want to see them. They don't want to be there. The work that we do is, is magical. It's braiding a whole bunch of resources that may be flexible funding that turns into a gas card that allows someone to meet with their family that might be in LA. And that majority of the work, when we think about supporting the unhoused community, the majority of the, of the work is really keeping people in their home and their home might be a crowded home, a garage, a couch in somebody else's house.
Yeah, understood. Thank you. Okay, now if we can go back to the RENA goals. And I just bring this up because this is, this, you, you had mentioned, John, that this is our, one of our most challenging buckets for us to fill. So looking at this then, we are, we're here in year, going into year three, and we have 56% that we've hit of that goal. So we still need, we, we still need a bit to go on our very low. We haven't hit any of the low. Well, no, we've hit all of the low.
Yes. We, we've actually achieved that category and actually exceeded it.
Okay. And so I guess I'm trying to understand, what is our strategy as we're looking at RENA? I'm very interested in what our housing strategy is so that we can meet these goals that we have and not necessarily be so grossly over in one area and not achieving, you know, achieving the bare minimum on others. So if we could have some type of a purity of what we're achieving, I think that would be a really healthy mix for us. That's my question.
Really appreciate the question. And, you know, I think part of what the IHO does for us, when we talk with the housing development community is where can we maybe look for alternative options? So within the IHO, it does allow for flexibility of how that requirement, that housing requirement is achieved. So in, in some cases, it's better to work with a developer and maybe have them fee out. Look, we're almost going to achieve this category. Maybe it makes sense to fee out, use those funds, so we can come back to council and say, we have a project that we would like council's support of using $800,000 of housing funds to develop this project in partnership with nonprofit housing developer to build extremely low income housing. That's one strategy. Another strategy is we do have a couple of parcels that have been bought with housing funds or dedicated to the city. And those are going to be where we have opportunity to think about what is going to be the housing there. This is land that is set aside for housing. So how do we structure housing that fits the character of that community, but also works to solve some of these areas where we struggle with?
And, and if I can contribute, because at the end of the day, your question is exactly what we're here. Where do we go with this information? How does this influence your policymaking for us and our housing program? Couple of things to contribute to what John said. On the very low units, the other units are going to happen. The very low units, the city has to somehow find a way to influence the project. Either by the, we bring the property, we bring the funding, we negotiate with a developer. Out of the 115 units, Magnolias is contributing 66 units. So that's already, the number for us right now is about 49. Like we're, that's, that's the number. So the question that you're asking is exactly.
I'm sorry, what do you mean the number?
What's the gap? And then therefore, what are we solving for? So the gap, once Magnolias comes in, the gap is going to be about 49. And then the question for us is, how does that influence what we tell the development community? What is, how does that influence the way we run our, our program? Because often those units are more expensive and more difficult to program and require a nonprofit partner to come in because it's usually not the, the market rate developer. It requires a different dance, if you will. That is the reason why, you might recall, recently, we brought in an opportunity to allow a developer to fee out. Brookfield had a requirement to construct, they feed out 50%, they were going to construct the other half, nine units. And we thought, they asked, and we brought it to you, the idea that maybe it might make sense for the project and for us, because that particular project has a certain product type that we don't need right now. And the developer offered, well, do you want us to fee out? Then you city can use those funds to influence another project to get the RENA numbers that you need. At that time, we decided that it was, we were not ready. We were going to think about that a little bit more. But that is exactly the, the question I just wanted to contribute to those two, those two points to that answer.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm glad you talked about fee out because I think this is another important, really important topic for everybody to understand. In that, I'm concerned when we have a fee out, we don't also have a strategy to that. And so I have been asking and would really like to see a strategy on our fees and where and how those are used. Because with, then when I have a project that's coming from a developer, I can easily, more easily assess and weigh, what is it that they're going to contribute? How is that going to get me to feel what I need to fill? And, you know, there's many trade-offs, as you know, with our community in mind as well. And so if we don't have a strategy, then it just becomes a fee out where it may be more lucrative for a developer to just fee out and pay the fee. But we as a whole do not know where those dollars are going to be used and how they're going to be used. And I think that would be a great way to inform our strategy.
Councilmember, real quickly, just want to, we're getting close to your time. If you want to get to a couple more questions and then I want to jump in on a few as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then also with the fee, I think we, you know, I would like to see us really focus back to building the affordable housing. And I know that it is, is difficult for development, but we are not developers as a city. We are not developers. The, the community is. And I think that, you know, if, if they can build it for us, that that is a great opportunity for us to do. I would also like for us to continue to incentivize building within the developments because this is what has kept our, and I'm happy to hear that it's not one in eight, but one in five.
Councilmember, I want to remind you again, it's clarifying questions.
But I would like for us to look at how those fees, you know, how we're going to, to use that with the development. So that, that's the hard part. It, I want to make sure that we're building healthy communities. And if we have those units built, then we have a diversity of housing in those areas.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. I've got a few questions.
Wait, Mark, sorry, sorry. Before you move on, can I ask you things from this topic?
Sure.
So I have a couple of questions. Have we ever thought of putting out an RFQ to builders for profit or non-profit and say, we have maybe $4 million that we can contribute to your development so we can reach our low numbers? That's one thing. Have we thought about doing that? It doesn't have to always be for nonprofit. I think there's a lot of builders who would take the chance that are for profit to go ahead and do something like that. That's one of my questions. And then the other one, I keep hearing very low and we're stressed out about the 115, but we don't talk about the above moderate and we're at 111. That's huge. I mean, you told us we're down to 49 at low, but our above moderate is 111. What are we doing to do that? Because we have to meet that one too.
The, the clarifying point on above moderate is that's market rate. And market rate housing will generate, market rate housing is probably the more straightforward, easy way. So this is when housing is allowed to be built with no restrictions, it's going to be built. So this is a category that we should easily achieve. So that one, we're not as focused. Moderate is a level of affordability. We are making strides there and our code basically starts at the moderate level. So I do want to make a quick clarifying point. So when we say inclusionary, 10%, 15%, it starts at moderate level. So that's where it starts. If a developer wants to do something at a deeper level of affordability, low, very low, there are options within the IHO to do that. But the requirement is at the moderate level. So sorry, I didn't make that distinction earlier.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Got a couple of questions. One, really out of the, out of the staff report on page 12 and 13 where it talks about the RENA numbers. And one of the, and this is great because at, at the bottom of page 12 and leading into the top of page 13, you really do sort of give the, the equation of the 15% that we have to do as far as affordable housing and what that looks like compared to the RENA number itself, which is 1,037. And that's a minimum number, right? So while we look at that and think, hey, all we have to do is 1,037 units and we're done. It's not true because we have to, in order to hit those, these numbers, these low, very low and extremely low numbers, it, it causes a multiplying factor that you've described very well here. I'd like for you to address it because I think the public needs to know that because there's, I think there's a lot of confusion in the public about, you know, hey, we've, 1,037, we need to stop building. But we don't get to But we don't get to stop building, do we? Until we hit those, these, these extremely low, very low, and these numbers that are broken down here.
Really appreciate the clarifying question. Thank you. So, yes, our targets are 1,000, broken down by the categories you see on the screen. But right now, our adopted policy that's been in place for seven years basically says 15% is going to be affordable. So if you look at the goals, the RENA goal of 262, 151, and 174, that's a total of 587 units that needs to be built. Our policy says 15% of that. So if everything else is going to be market rate, how many units do you actually need to build just to get to the 15% that gets you the 587? You have to build nearly 4,000 units of housing just to achieve the 587. That's 15% of that number gets that 587. So you, to use a term, that you have to overbuild over the goal just to get those requirements. So really appreciate the clarifying question.
If I can just add to it.
Sure.
We may not need to build 4,000 units, because we're going to work on the very low and extremely low through the in-loof funds that we receive. But assume we meet all of our RENA goals in every category, that doesn't still mean we get to stop building, because in, you know, before SB 330, we had the ability to pace our growth so that we would hit our general plan numbers at the end of our general plan, planning period. We don't have the ability to pace growth anymore, and property owners have a right to develop their property. It's in the United States Constitution. They get a right to build. We don't get to say, you know, we don't get to say, "Well, we have enough. We're not going to let you use your property." So, so we hit all those numbers. We've got 4,000 new units. Person owns a piece of property that's vacant, zone for housing, they can build housing.
Right. No, I appreciate that, Don. Thank you. But-
I have a comment on that to clarify. However, there are developments that are 100%-
Hold on one second. Hold on, hold on. I don't want my timer going for that. Please go right ahead.
There are developments that are 100% affordable. And so in that case, we are not, you know, you're not having to get 15% of that build out. So I want to make sure that-
No, I was going to comment on that as well.
We're not, you know, if, let's be transparent of how that's working, and if we do have that, that, that we're also looking at that.
But that was what I was going to say on that. And thank you, because it's true, and Don, your point as well. But by, by all means, it's way more than 1,037. It is likely 3,000 to get to that. It doesn't necessarily mean 4,000, because somebody could come in and say, "Hey, we're going to do 100% affordable. We'll build, we'll build 200 units." That goes towards those numbers. So it doesn't mean that we have, we may not hit 4,000, but, but to Don's point, while we might hit these RENA numbers, we, we cannot stop building. So even within this eight-year cycle, we could, we could get to 4,000. We could get to 5,000. And it's not because, it's not because we want more, more houses built. There's laws that dictate to us, we have to keep building. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct, and we are processing the projects that are coming, that they have by right permission by the state to proceed. I think that Morgan Hill finds itself in, in a very interesting place in our growth projection. In the past, this community was very thoughtful in the way that we administered our affordable housing program. We ensured that affordable housing was spread out through every single development. We ensured that affordable housing was going to look exactly the same, from the doorknob to the window treatment. We ensured that in a project, the affordable units were not going to be pushed to one corner, but they were going to be invisible to the rest of us. And that is what has made Morgan Hill the community that it is. Today, with the new state laws that allows projects to show up without parking, with tremendous density, it's really challenging the fabric of this community. And we're seeing that struggle that we have. So in some cases, these projects are coming to us not because we ask for, but because the state allows them and because somebody wants to build them. They contribute to the, to our RENA, and that's great. But at the end of the day, the struggle and the policy for us, and I don't know that there is a whole lot of policy to be had, is how do we as a city show up and, and deal with, with this change that is happening and challenging our adjacent neighborhoods? The other thing that I'll say here is, in addition to the challenge to our neighborhoods, we, the city, are tremendously challenged. We don't talk about it. But these housing laws, they're not funded. They're unfunded mandates by, by the state. And the pressure that is placing on the city administration to quickly review all these projects and have them approved without any additional staffing is really challenging your workforce, your staff. And we're doing our very best, but in, in the context of what do we do with what we know? How do we influence our projects? We are trying to balance both continuing to grow in the way that this community has been planned with affordable housing throughout the entire community in a way that works. And now we have to deal with these projects that are trying to fit in into a space that may not have the adequate resources adjacent to them. Mr. Mayor, you were on your questions. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Now, when we meet our RENA numbers, we, as I understand it, we do get relief from SB 330. Is that correct? And so can you explain that? I say relief, but there's-
It's SB, that one might require Jennifer to come up, but I think it's SB 35 at the end of the day.
Oh, is that, okay, she's giving you the-
It's not SB 330, it's SB 35.
35, okay.
It's one of the many laws that have provided tremendous densities in, in projects. We have, across the Magnolias, we're processing another project that got in under SB 35 that is actually 100 units on six stories. It's five stories over podium. It is, has 100 parking spaces, but both projects are going to show up right adjacent and in front of each other. And we, as a community, will not have enough parking to support those families and to support the adjacencies. So that, that is something for us to be figuring out as we go forward over the next couple of years.
And just on that one specifically, the SB 35 project's not required to provide any parking, and their original proposal was to provide more units and fewer parking spaces. And through the work of our staff, we were able to convince them it's in their interest to park that project.
I don't, I don't like to take a, for us to take a whole lot of credit, because sometimes we think that we might give the council the, the wrong impression that we can really influence. But, but we should celebrate that, Don, so thank you for saying that. That project was three times as big, right? And, and it has been brought down to 100 units.
One second. I'll let you jump in here in a quick second, but I did want to make a comment. That we are starting to see the problems that, that this community is not only beginning to face, but will face in the future because of that law that indicates that there does not have to be onsite parking. It is going to be a problem. I'll ask that we hold the timer, and I'll let, write it in, but I've still got more questions, so.
Just real quick, I think it was Jennifer that was talking about some of the ways that we can potentially hold off on some of these projects, and one of them is safety. So I, I've heard it from many residents around the area where Magnolias is going to go, and it is something I've brought up before. How, how do you justify to families that are going to have children, where are they going to play? So isn't that a safety concern, right? Does that not count, Don?
Well, when we talk about safety, what we're really talking about is that, does it comply with uniform building codes, the written, published safety standards? That, and it has to be an existing written standard. It can't be something that, that we identify later based, so, so we don't, it's, when they talk about safety, they really just mean, like, is it going to fall down in an earthquake-type safety?
And, and we have challenged the projects based on our fire department being able to access the project, and we have explored safety within that context. But certainly parks is not, doesn't fit within that criteria. And I think, again, high level from a policy conversation for you in the future is if these projects are showing up and they might not have enough of the amenities and/or parking, then the question is, to us as a city, well, how do we, what is that, how do we administer our public spaces? What does that look like? And that is a conversation for us to have in the future.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
On page 23 of the staff report, under the extremely low income need, that bullet there, talk about 2,500 families that need extremely low and very low income housing, and we only have 130 units. But even if we could build the necessary housing for the extremely low and very low need, does, do our families here get first rights to those, those housing units?
So currently, under our below-market-rate program, the way it is designed, so this is where a developer builds a project, is subject to the inclusionary housing ordinance. Our program guidelines say we give first right to, if you already live here or you have a job at Morgan Hill, you go to the top of the list. Everyone else that may be interested in that unit, that does not self-certify that they either live here currently or work here, goes to a second tier. And then the lottery process works. We take all those with a preference, the Morgan Hill designation, and they get ranked. And then all those without a Morgan Hill designation get ranked. But all those that have identified the, the designation all go to the top of the list. So once a lottery happens, you basically start from the top and start working down on building out the, the package to either rent or own the unit. And you just keep working down until you find someone that meets all the criteria and is a go for the project.
Excellent. Thank you. Good to know.
So they do get first priority.
Okay, thank you. You had talked about, and, and I think with Councilmember Martinez Beltran, the conversation occurred about the, you had talked about putting, city putting money into the extremely low. In other words, feeding out. Can you describe again, where does that money come from?
So, under the inclusionary housing ordinance, there is, the requirement is, if you are building outside the downtown, you're required to do 15% of the units, make them affordable. Within that code, it also talks about a rate. So we determine the total livable square footage of that project. So not garages, but livable square footage. And we apply a rate that gets adjusted annually. And that rate determines your IHO fee obligation. That obligation, if you decide to fee out on 50%, that's where we get that number. So we're taking the livable square footage, times it by a rate, and that rate does get adjusted annually by CPI. And that is where we get that number. And then it's a discussion with the developer, are you going to build the unit? Are you going to fee out? If you want to, if it's a project less than 10 units, we did develop a policy that depending on the project and it's less than 10 units, oftentimes people just 100% fee out. That doesn't need to go to council. That was a, a policy that was brought to this council a while ago. But anything over 10 units, 100% fee out, this body needs to make that decision on, on whether that gets feed out enough.
And, Don, you, man, you lunged for your microphone.
And answer the question. It's, it's the developers that pay for it.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay, and thank you for that. Thank you, John. So we had, and Edith, you had mentioned the Brookfield project that we had talked about a short time ago. Staff said, "Go talk to him," because I think he was interested in still trying to work something out. So we're just going to come back to the council for us to decide whether or not to accept that fee out opportunity. If I'm not mistaken, correct? Yep. So my last question here really has to do around, when we talk about extremely low, and we've had conversations, at least I've had some conversations with the owners of Maple Leaf RV Park. Is there, some of those, some of those folks there are living long-term. Is, is there an opportunity there for any of those to be deemed extremely low, and how, how would that work?
So when we look at our RENA numbers, it's really new development. So that's, that's existing-
Got it.
...development, and so it doesn't get codified in our numbers that we report to the state annually.
But if they had, let's say they could expand the operation and could add new spaces, would that then be an opportunity for consideration under extremely low?
Yes, that is correct.
A lot of banging around there just to get to that. Okay, very good. Thank you. I appreciate that. We, okay, before we do that, though, I, I want to, again, want to track some time here. And I want to keep the conversation going. I don't want to cut anybody short. But I do want to make sure, because I think there are folks here who do want to speak on the next item that we get into here. So I would ask council, maybe if we would hold the questions now for this topic, we can move into the economic development.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to comment for housing?
If, if we could go ahead and do that, then it's supposed to come back to us for discussion. And I do think at some point, we're probably going to need to get moved on to the next one, so we'll. Yeah, we can be here till 11. It's up to you guys, but let's go ahead and, and let's open it for public comment. Do we have any speakers for public comment?
Yes, we do, Mayor. Joe Guerra.
Good evening, Mayor Turner, members of the council, city manager, city attorney. Joe Guerra from Brookfield Properties. Guess we're kind of the poster child that's been brought up tonight. A quick commercial, because I'm not going to stay to speak for economic development. We are the very proud developer that brought Sutter Health to town. We were very excited to see they're continuing to process the EIR supplement to expand the medical campus and very glad to have been a part of trying to get that part of the economic development strategy implemented. On the housing side, as has been mentioned, we were here two months ago with a recommendation from staff on a fee out. We did go back and work with staff, did make a suggestion of reducing the number of units that we would fee out and go ahead and offering units under the BMR program. We've been waiting to come back to you to have a decision on the fee out. We began implementing anyway the releasing units to the market. So we have already released several of the units of the eight we were asking to fee out. We would like to come back sooner than later to have the flexibility to potentially do that. I did send you an email yesterday, because there was a lot of real detailed information. But one of the things I wanted to point to is, we had one of our affordable partners provide detailed information on depth of subsidy needed to make a VLI apartment, an ELI apartment, for example. And what you will see, if you look at that document, is the fee out for a moderate income, us as the example, it'd be different for everybody, would basically get you the possibility of two, so one moderate fee out could get you two ELI if you subsidize a VLI to an ELI. Now, again, it's a very specific example with a very specific developer, but I know that question got asked when we were here last time, wanted to help try to provide some of that. Big picture, it's really important to take a moment and pat yourselves on the back, because not everybody has the RENA situation that you do. Morgan Hill does an exceptional job compared to everybody else in the Bay Area, and frankly, everybody else in the state. And I hope that as you keep talking about this, you've been very focused on what are the ones you need to do to get that little tidbit, to get out of SB 35? Because the, the market rate developers, and this is another thing I did comment in my email. I think there may be a partnership between cities and market rate developers to talk about legislative relief for cities that are doing the right thing, that are meeting the RENA goals, or getting close to meeting it, and meeting it in all these different categories. Maybe there should be some carrots on top of the sticks that the state have had. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you, Joe. Any other public comment?
Yes, our next speaker is Rocky Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Rocky Garcia. Glenn and I have been local homebuilders in our beautiful Morgan Hill city for over 50 years. Our projects are mainly single-family detached homes, and they're spread across the city. We probably have about eight or nine of those. Our only multifamily- Our only multifamily project is the downtown Sun Suite project, which we're very, very proud of. But we believe that the single-family detached homes that we have done, and everybody else has done here, are the strength of our city. And as noted in our general plan, 70% of our homes are supposed to be single-family detached and 30% attached. We have not met that criteria in the last, since the general plan update. And what I mean by that is, we, in our opinion, need to keep building more single-family detached. It's the heart of our community. Our new Horizons project is 320 homes. 286 of them will be single-family detached. We will also have 34 duets. Our Quail Vineyards project, which is at the corner of Santa Teresa and Watsonville Road, will be 14 one-acre custom lots. We're going to be very, very proud of those. Both projects have been in review by the staff for over eight years. Each one of them, actually, one of them is over 20 years. And we're very, very close to getting those done. So, I'd like to say something about us as local. We believe in our friends and our local home builders. We have some here tonight, Paul Lattala, the Varellas are here, Divin, Murray, and all of them. We're local builders. We contract with local subcontractors. We specifically use Trincherro, and we've used them for the last 30 years. We buy from Johnson Lumber. Again, we live in our community and we contribute to the community. Specifically, Glenn and I have given you a proposal to return to building in our single-family detached communities on the corners, below-market rate duets. And they look exactly like the homes there. We've been very proud of each one of those that we've done at Cali Sienna, Sienna, and Capriano north of town. We want our BMR buyers to be part of the community. We don't want them to stand out. We want them, again, to be part of the community. Our buyers, our BMR buyers will be able to afford something on these duets, specifically the HOA dues, their landscaping, and the upcubed.
Rocky, sorry, your time is, your time is up. It's time to play Rocky's theme.
May I just say one last thing, if I would, please?
If you can do it in five seconds.
It will take me exactly 12 seconds.
I'll give you 12.
That is, if I could, or I'll have my grandson do it. Our new Renaissance project will work with you to add extremely low-income housing to help meet your Rena goal.
Thank you, Rocky.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is John McKay.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff. Not used to this, been a while. So, first of all, I'm kind of suffering from post-traumatic stress syndrome, talking about housing, and it's a tough one, it's a challenge, and it's, we've got all kinds of battles out there, and one of them is, there is a very popular commenter out there saying that, you know, the Santa, the state is just, this is all smoke and mirrors, you know, it's Boogeyman. Well, hopefully, you guys have cleared that up today, because it's very clear that the state is dictating exactly what you can do with housing. So, I want to thank everybody for the housing discussion, and to me, this is what I would call the hardware side of things. This is where you can build, you can provide the housing, the food, all the things that people need to actually survive, but I want to talk about something that really I call the software, the software side of this discussion. That is how we think about and how we talk about the unhoused, the homeless. I started working probably 10 years ago with Rebecca Garcia, who's a former housing director here, and she really brought me into the fold of understanding what our community does, what our faith-based community does, what our nonprofits do, and what the county does. And it's a very important equation. All those players have to play their part. But there's another part, and that's a part that the community can play itself. And this is where I want to get involved with this software side. About a year ago, I got a call, and the call said that one of my best friend's virtual family member had passed away. As hard as that was to take, I found out soon after that he was considered homeless. He did not live in a house, he lived in an office building. That made me think about all the stuff I've been reading on social media, all the things I'd heard on the streets, and it was really disappointing because there was so much misunderstanding, misperception of who the homeless are. There are so many different degrees of being properly sheltered, and I think that we need to start to think about all of these people as really viable human beings, and contributing members to our society. So, to that end, at the end of September, 11 of South County's leaders, people in this room, people from Gilroy, nonprofit organizations, sat and talked about the homeless condition and how we can talk about it in our community, how we can change the way we talk about it, try to get rid of the stigma that is attached to being homeless. So, what I'd like to do is invite all of you to participate in changing how we talk about it, remembering that these people, at one time, probably sat at a family table at Christmas. How would you talk about that person if they had sat at your table? So, I invite you all to be part of it, and if you want to join the discussion, please let me know, and I'll start another discussion group. Thank you.
Very good. Hey, you did it right at the 12-second mark, just like Rocky. Thank you.
I'm good, Paul.
Any other public comments?
Our last in-person speaker is Chris Varelo, and then we'll go to Zoom.
I'll shorten it by 24 seconds to make up. Just want to start off by saying thank you to staff, Jennifer Carman in particular, that presentation was great. As a developer, I thought these tools were strong, but I think they're even stronger now today. It was pretty amazing. Mr. Legg, you made a comment that the BMR product is starting to phase off after the 55-year restriction. My question is, does the person that owns it, when that drops off, do they get a windfall and they're able to then sell that home at market? If, let's say they, if they owned the house for the last five years or something. So, that's my first question. And then, if that is the case, where the last person that owns it, but they bought it at a significant discount compared to market, I think it would behoove the staff and city council to maybe look into that program moving forward, because I think that that could be a tool that the city could leverage to create funds to supply more housing when that goes off. So, I think if you buy a below-market rate home, you should get a reasonable return on the house, but if you bought it for $250, I don't know what they sell for, and now it's worth a million and a half because it becomes a market rate product, that just seems wrong. So, yeah, that's my comment. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Actually, that's actually a good question, if it's something we want to answer now, but somehow getting the answer to that would be helpful. John, briefly, can you answer that?
Sure, and I might look to Julius to supplement this answer, but in general, once you've met the, so, I do want to make a quick clarify, so, initiate the deed restrictions for 30 years. That got modified several years ago. Now, our deed restrictions are anywhere from 45 to 55, depending on the product type. But once you get to 30 years and you've been in your home, if you choose to sell it, you can sell it at market rate. You've met the obligation, you've participated in the program. That is, that is the ability to do that.
And the only thing I would say is, the intent of that, the program is essentially to get some, get people into starter homes, get their start, build up credit, build up some equity, and then eventually move into a market rate home, so those homes typically cycle. Our original program, that wasn't the intent, and so often, so oftentimes, the money was coming from various sources, and the idea was, over the 30 years, they would pay and earn the ability to sell that at a windfall. But that was the earlier program. Our current program, the idea is those homes stay in the program in perpetuity, and that's why we do the longer, the longer periods of restriction.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, just a quick point of clarification. So, my name is Julius Widowsky, I'm the program administrator for the city of Morgan Hill. So, when somebody goes to sell their house and they're signing a deed restriction when they first buy, that deed restriction is for 45 years typically. Now, when they go to sell, the typical person sells within 10 or 15 years. And when that new person buys, they sign a new 45-year deed restriction. That was a change that we worked with the city to put in place probably 10 years ago, because they used to assume a deed restriction at the very end, and yes, the windfall would take place, but now, since that policy's been changed, that no longer takes place.
Excellent. Thanks for the clarification on that, that was good. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, we have Armando Benitez.
Thank you, Armando. Anyone else?
That was our last speaker, Mayor.
Very good. We'll close the public comment on this item, we'll bring it back, and here's what I would, here's what I'd like to do. We are, I don't know how late you guys want to stay tonight. So, we've got about an hour or so, hour and a half, to now talk about this next item, with comments, questions, and public comment as well. I would, I would ask, is there anything in particular that we would look at that maybe we want to do a deeper dive into, that we would want to bring forward to another meeting or even schedule another meeting? But is there any particular topic that you would identify that say, that's, I want to dig deeper on this? Is there anything that you might have?
Are you talking about what we just talked about?
What we just talked about, housing, yeah, yeah.
On my part, I'm actually interested a little bit in the whole, how we deal with the unhoused, specifically our liaison that goes out to the community. I just had some questions that I would like to dive deeper later, not tonight, but...
Okay. Yeah, that's what we're looking for, is what are some of the topics, and we can try to get these scheduled. Okay, you're, thank you, Michelle, you've got a...
Yeah, and Michelle, if you have to clarify, I'm, as a nurse, I see the differences, you know, there's different levels of why people are unhoused. My concern always, not, no, I shouldn't say my only concern, that's not phrased right, but I do get a little bit more stress, we'll say, for my truly mentally ill, right? And our community is very tiny, so I'm always worried, like, who are we partnering with to maybe get them placed? So, not housed, but placed, because there is a difference with your...
But the topic itself is unhoused.
The unhoused, but, yeah, I'd like to dive a little bit deeper with that.
Okay, very good. Anything else? Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
I don't want to dive, I have some more comments that I want to make whenever we're done with.
Okay, let's do this, then, if you guys don't mind. Why don't we consider going to the next item, and if we've got some extra time at the end, and however long you want to stay, I'm willing to do so, we can come back to some of these questions. You guys be okay with that?
I don't, I don't have questions, I just want to make some comments.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you do them concise, so that'd be great.
Yes. First, I would like, if we're going to do this later, then, I'm interested in, I think I saw Brian here, but about the shelter, we have a shelter that's managed by a community Christian. Every winter, as you know, for the past eight years, I asked, when is that going to be open? But it seems like they're, you know, I would like for that to be more readily marketed, available, the, or fire, however. So, that's one. And then the other one is just talking about, there still are, you know, I don't want us to just walk away saying, because it is important for us to understand that there are still reasons that we can deny a project, very, very much so. There have been projects that have been approved that could be denied, such as the gates, where we need to look at, you know, the zoning, the ordinance, the health and safety. So, these things are not gone, there definitely is a huge push from our legislation, our legislators because of the housing crisis, but by all means, there certainly are areas where that's part of what we have to do with policy, is look at, you know, is that appropriate? And so, those are things that we need to also keep in mind.
So, do you want, is that, that would be something we'd want to dive deeper on, is what you're suggesting? Legislation, or some, you know, the topic of where can we deny?
I mean, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we have to dive deeper into that. What I'm saying is that that's very much real, for us to sit here and say that there's no way to deny a project is not true. There are reasons, and we do have to qualify a project still, but yes, there's lots of pressure on us.
Yeah, but I would recommend we at least have some future conversation about that.
I think that's right.
Yeah, so we, so we really have a better understanding of what that looks like.
I agree. I would like to have more information on that.
Legislation approvals or denials for affordable housing.
And I think where the council can deny, and not limited to it.
What, maybe what we do have control over.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, good, thank you.
I have one real quick, sorry.
Okay, let's go, yeah, please.
Can we maybe look into, seeing how we maybe create an RFQ with some of our builders so we can meet the low, low income? What can we do with the money that we're getting back? Like, have a plan, like you said earlier, Yvonne, have a plan of what we're doing with the money, not just sit in and say, well, we'll think about it. Like, that would be a good one to do. Maybe we can create one so we have a plan for that money with our builders, for profit or for nonprofit.
Very good. Okay, if there's no more, then there's a request to take a brief break. Let's do a 10-minute break. We'll be back here, let's say, at 8:15, and we'll go again. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Six total revenue are derived from sales, T O T and property tax and other taxes. So there are other taxes within that thirty six point seven million dollar number there. So where does the money come from? This is a simplistic slide, but I think it tells an interesting picture that it's tax collection one oh one. So residents and visitors, what they pay and spend. So when somebody spends or pays one dollar of property tax in Morgan Hill, the city receives ten cents of that dollar. When a resident or visitor spends one dollar in the city of Morgan Hill, the city receives one cent. So it's just a portion of the sales tax that's collected. And then on T O T, when a visitor comes to Morgan Hill and they stay in one of our hotels, they pay a T O T tax. And for every dollar they spend at a hotel, the city collects eleven cents. So it's pretty clear when you're looking at return, T O T is a great return for the city of Morgan Hill. Here's a quick slide to show kind of taxes collected since two thousand and thirteen and the trends of those taxes for property, sales tax and transit occupancy tax or T O T tax. Those tax collections are trending up, but you can see in T O T where it's flattened post COVID, where it actually declined during COVID. We have not yet recovered in from COVID. And then on sales tax, you see some slippage in the last few years because we've seen increased online sales are really impacting local retail sales collection. And we've seen nice gains on property tax. So here's the sales tax, sales tax collection by category. So when you're looking at the mix of the collection of sales tax in the city, you can see that auto and transportation make up twenty two percent of the sales tax generation. That's our strongest category. That's followed by the county pool, and we'll explain that in a little bit more. Fuel stations, eleven percent, consumer goods, thirteen percent, restaurants, thirteen percent. And I will say the county pool. So what is the county pool? So when somebody makes a purchase online in Santa Clara County, outside of the city of Morgan Hill, a sales tax is collected. And that sales tax is then attributed to a county pool, which is then distributed among the jurisdictions throughout the county. And your portion of the county pool that you get is based on the amount of sales tax that you collect as a percentage in the county.
Yes.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, so is that from outside of your city jurisdiction? So but outside of our city jurisdiction becomes another city jurisdiction. So isn't that their their sales tax jurisdiction unless it's in county property? And then doesn't that get disseminated to county property or county jurisdictions?
I'm not sure I understand the question, but I'll try to explain it again. So if you look at the entire, so if somebody makes a purchase online, it goes to the county pool.
Mm hmm.
Okay, it's not attributed necessarily.
They make a purchase online from outside Morgan Hill?
Either in the city of Morgan Hill or somewhere in the county.
I'm sorry, I thought you said outside of Morgan Hill, which.
It goes to the county pool. The city of Morgan Hill, our con, our portion of the county pool that we get right now in the last fiscal year, I think was two point two percent of the county pool. City of San Jose gets like forty five percent of the county pool because they're a much larger sales tax generator.
This is specific to online sales.
Correct. So that's how the kind of the county pool kind of works.
Got it.
I'm looking at Christina because she's the, okay, I got it. All right. So let's move off this slide. We kind of, you can see where our categories and where we're the strongest on sales tax generation, and I want to keep going. Some other retail impact, just so you kind of know, hotels, a mid scale, upper scale hotel, it's generating, you know, average T O T can generate enough T O T to support one point five police officers. An auto dealership that's fairly successful, a medium size, will generate enough T O T, or I'm sorry, sales tax to support two point five police officers. And a Costco could be four point five officers or more.
We need a Costco.
We do.
So our, our vision.
We're all saying the same thing up here. We need a Costco.
Yes, yes, yes.
Turn them down.
Dang it.
I've heard you loud and clear and worked pretty hard on that. Our vision is really clear. We continue to use the blueprint as, as our focus on innovation, advanced manufacturing, trying to grow existing companies, keep companies here, help them grow and attract new industry and grow professional jobs. Retail, we're focused on new retail offerings, keep the ones we have, and then really strengthen the existing commercial nodes that we have. On tourism, we're trying to grow that leisure agricultural wine country and recreational tourism, and we want to bring in new hotel, develop new hotel assets and inventory. And then on healthcare, we're trying to grow and foster the medical services and diagnostic industry and attract services and facilities to support our community. So we are very clear on working on the blueprint. In your packet, there was a list of strategies and actions that we've accomplished. We've accomplished eighty five percent of the action plan strategies in the blueprint year to date. After the end of this year, we'll probably be about close to ninety percent. So I want to do a quick deep dive into each of these four categories, and I'll do this pretty quickly. So innovation and advanced manufacturing, our challenges are pretty simple in this category. It's an economic climate has really slowed all Silicon Valley expansions, and that really happened in two thousand and twenty three when interest rates kind of spiked up. That's interest rates have really affected the flow of capital along with high construction costs. And even some companies that are looking at making tenant improvements within their existing facilities have put those tenant improvements on hold, hoping that interest rates or construction costs will ease a bit. So our opportunity in this category, right now, we have the best class A industrial space in Silicon Valley. We have a vacancy rate of fourteen point nine percent. That's a little bit high. There was a question at our last city council meeting that asked, what is the vacancy goal for our industrial buildings? The answer to that question is a mix. So it's too much vacancy is bad for the city because buildings will sit empty and they're not generating jobs and revenue. But at the same time, too low of a vacancy rate will cause problems as companies won't have opportunities to expand, and you may lose companies that need to expand. They may leave your city. So the right, what's the right fit for vacancy rate? It's probably between five to ten percent on the, on the industrial side. So right now, we have a good mix of product size and type, and it's one of our assets. So the good news here is two of our five buildings at Butterfield Five Technology Park are fully leased. We're actively working with C B R E and other brokers to market Cochrane Tech Center. And we've had local company expansions that include Toray, Paramount, Pinnacle Exhibits, and most recently Sempera Organics. We're actively working with some potential tenants for both Cochrane Technology Center and some other available buildings in our business park. And we're love to have some announcements soon, but we're actively pursuing some, some companies. And it's interesting, what used to take, you know, months to get these leases completed is now taking six months, nine months to a year to get leases completed. On the retail side, so our challenges on the retail side is really, we're a city of less than fifty thousand people. That makes, you know, when we talk to many of the retailers, we're looking to recruit, they want a base, a minimum population of fifty thousand people. We also share a trade area going to the north with San Jose and south to Gilroy. When you look at just our population of fifty thousand, I, and we, we talk about why this is a challenge, but you look at cities like Campbell or Los Gatos where they have less population and they're able to attract other retailers. Well, all you need to do is look at a map and draw a circle five miles around them. And Campbell's a great example. They have a population of about forty two thousand five hundred people, but within a five mile radius, they have five hundred and fifty five thousand people within a five mile radius. If you were to pull a five mile radius around Morgan Hill, you barely get to that fifty thousand number. So that's the retail challenge. So we fight, we kick, we scratch our way to attract the retail that we get. Other challenges are high cost of green field development. When you go into green field development, not just the cost of land, but the infrastructure, the impact fees, it's expensive. We have limited small retail space availability and then several retail vacancies underway like Rite Aid, Joann's, those are, those are caused by national chains that are downsizing or gone bankruptcy. Our opportunities, our downtown district is really in high demand. We're going through a little bit of turnover with some smaller tenants right now, but that's okay. It's okay. It's an opportunity for new businesses to come into Morgan Hill. We just graduated twenty new entrepreneurs today. We're really excited about that from the economic development team, bringing that project or that, that program forward. So let's figure out, you know, how we fill these vacant spots with these new entrepreneurs. We do have freeway fronting sites that we continue to market and promote. And then you'll see in an upcoming city council meeting, Condit and Laurel Plan Development areas, we're going to bring some updates that I hope you will approve after you get this great presentation and understand our need on the economic development side. So on retail, some recently open businesses, Grocery Outlet, that space has been vacant for many, many years. Really happy that we got somebody in there. Chick-fil-A, Lux Design and Decor, that's a L A O project, Kirman Diana Boutique, Chocolata Crepe Shop, Stax, Curr Contemporary and Vera Restaurant, and then Pre Hispanic Mexican Cuisine. Got the owner operator right here.
All right.
And then under construction, Raising Canes, and they're going to open later this month, I think. And then Taco Bell. And then coming soon, they're doing tenant improvements, Phil's Coffee, Tractor Supply is going through entitlements, and then El Pollo Local just submitted tenant improvements too. So we're making a little bit of progress with some of these projects coming forward. So tourism, slow recovery from COVID nineteen. We're not alone in that. You know, the Greater Bay Area and just tour, just business travel has not come back, high cut cost of construction, and then aging hotel inventory. And if you read the staff report, you saw the number of hotels that we have. You know, we have about fourteen hotels in the city, but there's really six of them that actually generate most of our T O T tax. And one of our challenges is that we haven't built a new hotel since two thousand and sixteen, and we missed a hotel cycle. And, you know, now we're, we're kind of in this place where we're having aging inventory and, and how do we handle that? And, but the good news is, the opportunity is, we have a beautiful downtown full service boutique hotel under construction, supported by Appalachian Hospitality. We also have a hundred and sixteen room hotel that's fully entitled on Cochrane Road. So if interest rates come down, construction costs kind of ease, potentially you have a project that could come out of the ground there. We have the opportunity to expand sports and entertainment and recreational assets. We do have a hotel incentive plan. We've done some additional investigation in there. I think it's probably on us from an E D standpoint to come back to with some minor updates to the hotel incentive plan. And then we have upcoming activations for the two thousand and twenty six Super Bowl and the FIFA games, and not to forget that in March, we have the college N C two eight March Madness Games at S A P. So we're paying attention to that. There's some activations that we'll be taking advantage of. So other assets around tourism, we have the new fine art gallery and events facility, the city council, you passed a one percent for art ordinance that can create new things for people to look at and visit once we start building the new public art. The public art master plan is underway. We're excited. You heard the report from Krista last week from the Visit Morgan Hill about the Destination Magazine that's underway. Should be, it will be published in January so we can make sure that all of the folks attending the Super Bowl and March Madness and FIFA will get that Destination Magazine. And I think it'll help put Morgan Hill on the map. And really, we have a strong Visit Morgan Hill marketing presence, and I think you heard that from Krista's present, presentation last week. Healthcare. So the challenges for healthcare is, again, it goes back to that fifty thousand population, the amount of population that we can serve and the market size. It's a bit of a challenge to attract large providers. We did have some success attracting Sutter Health here to Morgan Hill. They've taken over the existing space. They're going through, and this is the opportunity down below, they're going through the E I R process now. We're near that, near that completion. We're in the public comment phase. We've allowed medical in pretty much all of our zoning districts within the city, but the challenge there, limited space for satellite providers, and then medical tenant improvements are costly. So it's going to take some time, but I think it's some, it's an area where we definitely have opportunity to bring more players into the market over time. So our strategic efforts, we're pretty focused, myself and Brittany and Chris Schaefer, who's our economic fellow, who's been with us for quite some time, really focusing on business retention and expansion, providing support, business tools, resources. Brittany and Chris spearheaded the Renaissance Contract while I was out on my leave and got that in place. Really excited to see that coming to fruition, that program continuing. We have funding to continue that program into next year. We support businesses of all sizes and industries. We're working on workforce development and business entrepreneurship. We're doing a lot of marketing and promoting. You saw some, some materials in the, in the staff briefing that shared examples of what we do on the marketing. We're doing more national marketing this year with site selection magazines, so we're broadening our reach outside of Silicon Valley, promoting our, our best industrial assets. And then we work with our developers as an O N Spudsmen to connect them to tax programs, grants, broker communication, giving tours. We're meeting with companies and trying to provide, trying to connect the dots to make sure that they find that we're business friendly and we're ready and we're ready to move fast and get them the permits they need. And then on the policy side, we do incentives, try to update zoning and do research and studies. So we're extremely focused on the economic development side. I think I'm just going to close with the fact that, you know, we do have promising tenants in the pipeline for some of these industrial products. We have been seeing and reading in real estate articles that interest rates coming down, they're starting to see some activity. And in the last quarter, they've seen more absorption of commercial and industrial space than they'd seen in the previous two years. We have some great potential shopping center development in the pipeline, nothing that we can talk about right now, but we have some things in the works that we're excited about. And we just came back from I C S C, which is the retail conference. Great meetings with Evergreen and other partners that we're looking to bring to the city. So there's lots of opportunity and I appreciate your time, and now we'll take, I think, questions.
All right, thank you, Matt. I appreciate that. Are there any questions by, again, these are clarifying questions. Want to stick to clarifying questions. Anybody? No one. Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
What do you mean by clarifying questions? I mean, the hope of asking for this was so that, you know, there'll be more, so the people are more familiar with everything that we've been doing historically and kind of where we can go. I'm, I'm really interested to hear what the others think about what we have done and where you think there might be opportunities? Or what you think about what they, all the efforts they have made?
Right, and I, I do thank you for your presentation, Matt. And I know I've talked to you several times and you've been very gracious to meet with, with me as a relative. Is it, well, I was told not to get too close to it.
Yeah, but don't get too far away either.
Yeah. I know, it's like Goldilocks here. You know, my question about, for me, it's always health, right? I'm always asking you questions, and you guys have done a great job with the Sutter bringing them in. But I'm curious, I know DePaul Center has quite a bit of space. Do you have a liaison that talks to the county at all about expanding their services, like a same day surgery center? That actually is, it's not a hospital and it's very convenient to our residents. I have, I had to drive, what, forty five minutes to have my knee surgery? Santa Clara got all my money that day, or at least my husband's, because he had to stay there and wait for me. But do we ever talk about bringing something like that here?
Yes, absolutely. I'm going to answer that question. So our, our team has worked closely with the county and are in communication to talk about the different services there. Excited that the expanded, the expanded hours for the care, urgent care is open, full pharmacy with robotics and all sorts of stuff now. They have a lot of plans, but one of the needs is the funding to make it happen. And so they have plans in place for more along the lines of acute step down care. I, I don't recall any specific conversations about surgery center by DePaul, but I think that that was mentioned by Sutter, if I recall correctly. So yes, to answer your question, Paul Lorenz, who's the C E O that's responsible over there, we stay in contact with him as well as others at the county.
Thank you.
Anyone else, any questions?
Sorry, one more.
Sure.
Sorry.
Go right ahead.
And, and I know I bugged you about this one time before, but I, I'm curious, maybe moving forward, and I don't know how to phrase this as a question, but would we ever consider some of our strip malls, maybe redesigning the purpose of our strip malls? Because that, that seems to be kind of like a dying breed, so to speak. Could we ever consider in the future, maybe thinking of like, say, a Walmart on the bottom, housing on the top? Is that something that we would ever consider looking at seriously?
To answer your question, yes, we would look at it, consider, can, seriously, consider it, right? But it's going to be driven by market forces. It's going to be driven by the developer and the landowner. It's not something the city can necessarily drive. However, if you're looking at the Monterey Road Corridor, the zoning was recently updated to allow essentially mixed use all up and down the Monterey Road Corridor. And so the densities were increased and I forget the technical term, Jen. Form, form based code, thank you, that allows, you know, developers to do retail on the bottom at different heights, varying heights and mixed use. And absolutely, I mean, we look at areas along Monterey Road in particular, that we would love to see some redevelopment, property owners to reinvest, aging hotels that we'd like to see some investment or, or older commercial properties that could just be better served. So, but I think that's over time. The challenge is, how do you incentivize the commercial development as opposed to residential development?
Thank you.
Thanks, go right ahead.
I know you guys do a ton of work and I appreciate all the hard work that you guys do. And so I know in the past, we had some opportunities for some car dealerships and some hotels, and unfortunately, it just didn't happen. So moving forward, if there is somebody that wants to come in and say, I want to build a hotel, there is a place, the zoning's in place, and it'll be a mass, like faster process?
So I think the one thing that we've tried to convey to developers who are looking to bring projects to Morgan Hill, and Edith talks about this, is we try to move fast.
Okay.
And we actually have heard that given to us back as feedback is, oh, you guys are moving fast. You guys are, you know, you're hearing what we need and you're responding to it. So if someone wants to build a hotel in Morgan Hill, we're going to move fast. We're going to, we're going to, from an economic development side, we're going to try to push internally to get the entitlements done as quickly as possible, try to look at the incentives, whether it's fee freeze agreements, fee financing agreements, sales tax or T O T sharing agreements, whatever we can do, we'll pull out, you know, whatever incentives that we can do in order to get the development done. But we're, we're limited on what we can do, but we will definitely do our best, especially when we're looking at auto dealers and T O T, because we recognize the return on investment for the city.
When you say we're limited on what we can do, what do you mean?
We're, we're in the state of California, so we're not like Texas and Arizona and Nevada where they, where the state will come in and give big tax breaks. But we do coordinate when we're looking at industrial users or manufacturer users. We do coordinate our activities with Go Biz, the state of California. We're putting them in contact and we're co-hosting conference calls with users to making sure that they understand the resources that are available to them, whether it's a Cal, Cal Competes Tax Grant or a Workforce Development Initiative, E T P Training Programs, things of that nature, use tax rebates, things of that nature, we'll connect them to them.
Okay. Well, I mean, Christina, you've done a really good job for us new councils to set up meetings with Edith and Matt, and we, I really appreciate it. It was like, we learned a lot of stuff and so I feel more comfortable. And then also I've been to a couple of other meetings where you guys have done presentations, and that was helping for me too. So I do want you to know that we do see all the work that you do and we appreciate it. So is there anything that council can do to make your job easier? And I, oh my God, okay, yes, go ahead. I'm going to answer, I want to answer that.
I think, I want to be careful what I say.
I'll start off, how's that?
You, you want, well, can I, can I start and then you can close?
Sure.
We're going to have some upcoming agenda items, right? So we're going to bring forward some P D updates, some plan development area updates for the Condit Auto P D, the Condit South P D, the Laurel Avenue P D. All of those are intended to increase flexibility around development, increase the potential number of auto dealers, hotels, things of that nature. Let's, let's update those P Ds. Let's modernize the P Ds and increase the flexibility. Where do I come forward shortly with an update to the entertainment permit? It should, I think it's something you'll like. I know the business community likes it. We want to move and allow businesses to have live entertainment by right up until ten B M. Had a great partnership with the police department and the chief to, to potentially bring this policy forward. I also would ask that when we bring fee freeze agreements or fee financing agreements, that we, you know, we approve them, if they make sense, right? If they make sense to you and they make sense to the city and it, it looks like there's a good return investment, that you, that you do that. And then as we look at other policies and procedures that we think will help us retain and attract businesses, that we move those policies forward. And then if we need to make a, a minor change to something, that we, that we make that change and we move fast because businesses want certainty. They, they need, in this type of environment, if we're delayed in making our decisions or getting back to people, they'll move on. So I'll leave it at that, and then I'm sure Christina and Edith can clean up my mess.
No, excellent.
I should have said three things, just kidding.
Yeah, I mean, I would just start off, big picture, you know, we have on our sustainable Morgan Hill document, we want Morgan Hill to be the very best place to work, to live, you know, and for, to operate your business, right? And so we want to be as business friendly as possible to our existing businesses so they want to stay here. They don't want to move, whether it be to another city or out of state, and then we want them to expand here. And then for the new businesses, we want to be known as a community that welcomes them. Two things Edith has drilled in my mind over the last several years, jobs and dollars, right? And so that's what these folks are doing is they're going after dollars for our city and they're bringing jobs so that our community members, to the extent they can, don't have to commute. So with that said, the thing, the, the areas of work for economic development are based upon foundational documents that have been approved by, by prior councils. Thank you for acknowledging that we've worked with the new council members about, you know, just the foundational documents, the economic development blueprint that was adopted in two thousand and seventeen and validated in, in two thousand and twenty four. Though, that's what we're going after, those sectors. And things, you know, when we break to the council, fee freeze agreements, we already have an approved structure for those. And so what we're bringing forward is our best recommendations. Edith, anything else?
Well, thank you. I, I am very happy to chime in. In addition to approving anything that Matt brings to you, I think that what I would do for you, council, I would probably elevate the conversation and say a couple of things. Economic development not only requires a vision and intentionality, but it's opportunistic. At the end of the day, it is matching the market conditions and being ready. Morgan Hill, unlike many communities up north, as Matt said, we have to fight, we have to scratch, we have to fight for every single economic development gain that we get here. Other communities up north, it just comes to them. So for us, what is So, for us, what is most critical is making sure that we are growing in the same direction as you are, because it is so hard for us to come in and get those prospects, to look at us, that once we find the, and, and those relationships could be years before they even come to you. So, by the time those relationships come to you, we have this short window to make that happen, and then market conditions change. So, the biggest advice that we can get from you is, is tell us if we're headed in the right direction. If we are not pursuing the right economic development, let us know. Um, I think that, a couple of other things that I would highlight from a policy perspective is two things. One, with today's housing laws, more than ever, our opportunities for economic development are, continue to diminish. We have commercial and industrial projects now turning into housing. We have housing projects that have a, an absolute green light. Economic development projects have to fight through the entitlement process to get their, their goal. So, already, the deck is not the same. Economic development projects just have a, a higher hill to climb. So, when we think about those things, um, we need to think about making sure that we're holding hands with you, that we are, that we move fast. And the last thing, kind of again, high level, is we think about our industrial lands, our vacant, commercial and industrial lands, as the forever opportunity for the city. We have a fiduciary responsibility to this community to maximize the opportunity in those lands, because things are expensive to maintain. It is expensive for the city to keep the lights on. It is going to be more expensive in 10 years from now. We need to assure that we bring as much economic opportunity to this city as we can, but even then, if today, we say, all the economic, all the vacant lands can go up to whatever the general plan and zoning allows, today, all of them at once, even if that were the case, the economic return on those properties will not close the financial gap that we as a city have in the long run. So, my advice to you is that we need to continue to move forward with intentionality to attract those economic development projects and continue to figure out how to be sustainable. We have benefited, this community has benefited from the fact that it has come together to embrace a vision that has allowed us to capture a whole lot more economic development than many other communities have ever seen in the last 10 decades. And that is a credit to the community, to you and the council, and to previous councils and the planning commission. I'll end with that.
Thank you.
Last 10 decades, did you mean last 10 years? 100 years or 10?
Seems like the husband.
Yeah, thank you, Edith. Uh, and Councilmember Martinez-Beltran?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the, um, summary of everything that's also just, you know, a long history of what has, what we've tried and what can work and what has worked and what has changed and somersaults and gymnastics. So, it's been, it's been quite a ride. I am, you know, I think, I, I, I love the energy, I always loved the energy, and I love the story that you're telling, and I think that we're, we're getting closer with the blueprint and it's getting tighter. It was a lot looser, I think, before. Um, and I do think we need to update that soon, we're coming on 10 years.
Soon.
So, we just have a very different, different market now. I think we've had some, you know, I think absolutely, we want to use the lands for what we designate them for, um, and we want to protect our industrial and our commercial development. And, for example, you know, the industrial buildings, I mean, they're not what we had hoped that they would be, right? So, so, how and what do we do? Now we have those assets. I know that you're, you've been marketing those for years and trying to squeeze out whatever you can. It sounds like we might have to, I mean, we, we can only do what we can do for that for now, but that's not going to be the area that's going to, that's going to be bringing in, bringing in the bread for us for right now. What I think, I also want to look at some of the new, you know, lots of talk about data centers. I'm interested to hear about that and what you're hearing about data centers. I'm hearing lots of talk about that. Um, and I want to know, are we, where are we in the running for that? Is that something that we can really get a strategy and, you know, is that an opportunity that we can go after aggressively and try to bring to Morgan Hill? I want to understand, what are, what are the benefits for us and what are the challenges on that? Because I'm, I'm wanting to get in there and try and see if we could get our piece of that, um, and what that means, looking at that. I also think that, you know, the, the healthcare piece, that's something, I think there is, I'm so happy to hear, uh, you know, that, that you were excited about, I've been pushing and pushing for that, and I know that there was lots of talk about what that could be, but I do feel that it was a loss of that, that land that's by, right by DePaul. I do think that, you know, that's part of Measure A is to try and hang on to the services that we have now without letting everything go. Losing a billion dollars of investment in our, in our county and Measure A is only trying to make up a third of that. I mean, that's just to keep the lights on. So, but trying to understand what can, what, what other, yes, same, we've talked about, I've talked about dialysis, cancer, whatever it is that we could try and bring there, I would like to hear more about what has been the trial and error on that end of it, um, because I just think we have such a great asset with that. And then, um, well, let me, let me start there. I can't read this woman's writing, that's her. I'm figuring it out.
So, could you just comment on those?
So, on, on data centers, we have, um, we have taken inquiries from a couple potential data centers, uh, data center developers over the course, I'd say, the last two to three years. Um, they have looked at the existing infrastructure, uh, within Morgan Hill. Um, they want somewhere between 12 to 15 acres, right next to a, um, transformer station, right? So, that's not a lot of infrastructure that we have in Morgan Hill, um, let alone the vacant, available, zoned, appropriate land. Um, so we've had some challenges with that. We've provided the available, available sites that we had at the time, and the conversations haven't developed into a formal proposal or a project. I never, never say never, it's something we'll continue to work on. We do have a couple vacant, available 10, 12-acre sites that we can continue to identify, um, but they're not necessarily close to the, the power infrastructure that they would need. So, that infrastructure would need to be built out. Um, we are interested in trying to understand better what's happening in Gilroy and understanding what that pipeline looks like, uh, because there's got to be some infrastructure to be built out to support that. So, how do we potentially leverage that moving forward?
Right on.
Then your question around healthcare, uh, we continue to keep relationships, not just with Sutter, but, you know, outreach to the other major providers. I won't name them, but you know who they are, right? The major providers in the, in the Bay Area, we continue to outreach to them and let them know, "Hey, we're still here." Um, but many of them are focused on their own expansion efforts in other cities right now. Um, I think it's just potentially a matter of time that we'll see something, but, um, we're going to have to be patient, but we're going to stay in front of them.
Okay, okay. What about the preservation? What, what are your thoughts on that, on protecting the industrial and the commercial development? We've done, we've laid a lot of ground on that. Do you think that we're exposed to that area?
Uh, I think, depending on what the state does, we're always exposed on, on vacant industrial and commercial land for potential conversion. And I think in your packet, we put a, we put a map in there that showed, you know, the vacant, uh, industrial and commercial lands over, about, over one acre. Um, and what I really also wanted to show in there, in that map, kind of showed the orange areas, um, the, about 38 acres of, uh, commercial industrial land that we've lost to builders' remedy. Those are pretty big swaths of land, especially, um, the freeway-facing land, um, that Trammell-Crow, that's significant. But what we know is the best way to protect commercial industrial land from having housing built on it is develop it as commercial and industrial land, even if it makes it a little bit vacant. So, you know, even though we have, you know, Butterfield Five, that's only, you know, two-fifths full, um, or Cochrane Tech Center that just, you know, honestly, it really only got completed about a year ago. It hasn't been vacant that long.
What's the average on that, Matt?
Well, I think this market is, it's hard to read on the market, right? Because interest rates spiked just before that project came to market and everybody stopped their expansion plans prior to that. And everybody's just starting, not everybody, I shouldn't, but that's a big generalization. Companies are starting to look, while the companies, some companies are still contracting, we're still seeing layoffs, right? You're always going to see that on Silicon Valley, but we're starting to see in the real estate market more absorption rates in what I'm reading and hearing, and more deal flow is starting to happen. And if we're, interest rates continue to come down, I think we'll see more activity. Um, but I'm not an economist, it's just based on what I'm hearing from the brokers, and we're meeting with some companies now that, and we're seeing more flow and activity than we saw six months ago.
Okay. No, I, I appreciate that. I know, you know, I understand, but I, I am interested to know those tangible marks as well, right? Like, what is, what is the timeframe that we're, that we're, we need to have some goals and some, right? So, what is the goal if you have, uh, the Butterfield, um, Five? What could you estimate, anticipate would be the life to get those filled? What is the average? What is the, you know, in the broker field, what is that? I, I know we would do that, we, we would have to do an analysis, right, for a workforce fairness, so what is that on? I don't know what that is going now, but if you could provide something like that, I think that could give, that's a great indicator to just know as a baseline. Do, do you know that? I'm guessing probably not.
I'll try to quickly take a stab at it. I, I think that, that question that you're asking is really a question for the development community, and, um, I can tell you that based on conversations with people that build this product type, they're not seeing the Cochrane Tech project as being late or being concerned because it has not been, uh, filled with tenants yet. We are fortunate that project came out when it did, because in today's economic conditions, we probably would not be able to attract that investment today. And, um, we are just weathering the market right now. There's no signs in the private sector that are showcasing concern, and we have some folks here in the audience that may want to chime in on this as well.
That'd be great.
But if we find more information that is a little bit more tangible for you, we will certainly follow up via a communication to you.
Okay. I also would like, you know, what is similar to that type of thinking and that, that, what is the percentage of economic development that we're estimating, right, to, um, that, that we're estimating to contribute in the end to the general plan? I mean, I've asked this many times in many different ways, but I really am genuinely interested to know, what are we anticipating and expecting that that contribution would be from economic development? Because you said something, you know, really, Kate, this is not going to be the answer to all of your prayers, and fair, but what is it?
Councilmember, real quickly, uh, now, your time is up.
That's my last.
Please do, oh, good, good, please do, and I'll jump in afterwards.
Thank you. The question on, on, um, revenue projections for industrial properties, right? That's the question. How much revenue can the city anticipate with its new industrial buildings? Which is different than, say, how much revenue can we anticipate from a hotel or from a restaurant, right? We have, this is a different metric. For industrial buildings, it's very difficult to anticipate.
I don't want to, but I just want to make sure that you understand the question.
Yeah, please, thank you.
That would be part of it. I'm trying to understand economic development, we've got industrial, we've got commercial, we've got retail. I'm trying to understand what is the estimate that I could anticipate is going to come from economic development in my mind, when I'm looking at, you know, what, what is the revenue that I'm looking at that can possibly come from?
Future, future potential economic development with a future lands. Future, absolutely. I think that, that, that is an exercise that could be done. It's going to be, it's going to be a lot of assumptions.
Sure, yeah.
And certainly, we don't have that at our hands, but, thank you.
Okay.
But just, just to finish my other thought, projecting revenue, which is business-to-business in a, in an industrial project is really hard, because we don't know what the tenant is going to be.
Right.
Thank you.
That's fair.
I, I will, I will just add, I, I, I think you're looking for a very specific number that's very difficult to get to, but we do track economic indicators and we put that, the indicators that we track on a monthly and quarterly basis in the staff report, and we are keenly aware of what's happening with most of our businesses around sales tax and around TOT tax. And, uh, when we're seeing movement in the market, we're communicating with those businesses to find out actually what's happening in their business. That data's confidential, but we do have the ability to, you know, use it to do some analysis and then talk to folks to make sure we're doing our best for business retention. Um, and then also working with HDL to identify, uh, gaps in the market where we have leakage. So, where we're not generating, uh, sales in a specific industry, can we go identify a business that would help fill that niche, right? So, um, I think the exercise you're asking for, um, could be done, but I think Edith is right, we're going to have to make some huge assumptions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, guys. Couple of questions I have. One, uh, being, again, this is in the staff report, this would be page 65, if you want to track along with me on that. Second paragraph, there's a sentence that says, "When the opportunity arises, the city should strengthen language in the general plan to conform with the blueprint's strategies." My question being is, how and when can this be done? Page 65, second paragraph.
Yeah, your page numbers don't coordinate necessarily with my page numbers. What section of that?
Yeah, I would ask the clock to stop when they're talking.
Uh, so, Matt, it is on the fifth page of the 12-page staff report.
Got it.
And it's the second full paragraph, starting with the main strategic approach under the Innovation Advanced Manufacturing pillar.
Yeah, it's in that second, that paragraph, about halfway through. Question being again, "When, when the opportunity arises, the city should strengthen language in the general plan to conform with the blueprint strategies," having the case. How and when could we make that happen?
I, I think that, um, a big, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think that the intention here is this, the economic blueprint gives us guideline or a guidance on the type of industries that we're pursuing, medical, hotel, retail, and often, our general plan, not often, but a lot of the work of economic development is looking at the general plan and updating it, so that the general plan and the zoning matches the direction of the blueprint. An example of that could be updating zoning so that we can bring auto, updating zoning so we can bring hotels, and you're going to have those policies coming to you at the, I think, at the next council meeting, where we have a district on the, along the freeway on Condit that could benefit from changes to the zoning code, because what we have today is pretty restrictive, and we're using the blueprint to guide us with that recommendation to you.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And the next sentence, that following sentence there says, "Additionally, the city should work with property owners to amend restrictive planned developments, BDs, and/or create zoning overlays to increase user flexibility, as well as explore the incentives to encourage medical and professional office development." Is, is part of what you just described, Matt, there was three, three of those, is that, is that what you're pertaining, talking about here?
Correct. Yes, that's exactly what we're talking about.
Okay.
And the example is when we did the, the vehicle sales overlay on the Trammell-Crow property, right? That was, that was a zoning amendment. It just took us some time to get there.
Got it, okay.
The upcoming, the PD amendments that you'll see, uh, November 5th, is an example of that.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. Uh, then another question, a question I had there is, again, I obviously paging numbers Then another question, a question I had there is, again, obviously, page number's not the same. One of the, but on mine is page seventy-one, where the opportunities and challenges. A comment is made in here where it says, "Retail demand is healthy." Yet, on page sixty-five, we're talking about Morgan Hill's over-retailed. So how is, is it, is this not an oxymoron? Are we, we do have, is it retail?
It is a bit of an oxymoron. You know, we, so an example that was mentioned earlier, the Gates Project, right? So that was a project that was, you know, land that was zoned commercial previously. But the economic development team actually supported the conversion of that property to mixed use and allowing housing and allowing some commercial use on the first floor. Because through our retail concentration strategies, we identified that parcel as just not being very commercially viable.
Yeah.
So when we're looking at, you know, potential projects and where does, and looking at, you know, Cochrane Commons Two, there was a, there was a, an amendment to the, the plan at Cochrane Commons Two. It was hundreds of thousands of square feet of commercial land. Now it's a lot of housing with some commercial. I think, again, it's part of the retail, you know, rightsizing for Morgan Hill. But we need to protect the lands that we have because we have reduced the number that we have. So we need to prioritize keeping the retail we have. And then looking at, the, looking at the mix of retailers we have and making sure we maintain a good mix, right? But the market is in a, the market will bring people to Morgan Hill. But we got to make sure that when they come, we're ready.
Right, good point.
I think that's the most important message I can, I can leave you with.
Okay.
I was just going to add, from a, from a retail, from a retail demand perspective, what I think about is downtown. That is where the demand is. That is our leading horse when it comes down to all things, not just economic development vis-à-vis retail, but jobs, everything that we do points downtown. The interest that we see is for restaurateurs that want to come downtown. The shopping centers that we have, they, they, they're weathering the fact that we are over-retailed in the retail industry, meaning that there's more retail than we have housing here. Our housing projections, you know, it feels like we're growing a lot and fast, but we're not. The numbers, you know, we actually lost some, some residents during COVID. Where we were forty-eight, we dropped to forty-five thousand. So again, yes, oxymoron, but it changes depending on the location. What, what we see also, and we're protective of, is freeway fronting, retail opportunities, which are very different than other shopping centers that are not along the freeway. So strategies, I do think that change and positioning changes depending on the location.
Okay, thank you for that. With regards to the blueprint, Matt, if I heard you right, I think you said we're ninety percent either complete or have achieved the goals, about nine. So is that, and Councilmember Martinez Beltran mentioned, right, about ten years, might be time for me to look at this. Is that something that we'll be considering as far as, I mean, are we going to reset some goals? Those seem to be the, those categories within the blueprint seem to be good for us. So will we reset the goals, or how are we going to go forward with that?
I think, I think the categories, the sectors are the right sectors. I think it's for us to, you know, look, we're always adding action items to, I can't read that because I got one, I got one contact in and I can't see close enough.
Got to slide it a little bit closer to him.
You'll have to use the microphone, I'm sorry. We will have, we're, look, there's strategies and action items that we're implementing that aren't in the blueprint.
Right.
That we're implementing all the time, right? That we'll just be like, oh, we need to, we need to do this. Well, we don't care if it wasn't in the blueprint. We're just going to do it because it's the right thing to go do to support this industry sector.
Yeah.
So do we need to completely rewrite the blueprint to update our strategies and actions? Probably not. But we will, we do a annual work plan for economic development, and we bring that to you during the city council sessions in January and February and say, here's our work plan, this is what we're going to be working on. Do you agree or disagree, or are there more things that you think we should be working on? And we go through that cycle every year, and then midway through the year, we develop it, right? And then at some point, on any given day, any hour, we'll come up with another idea to go do something that we think benefits one of the industry sectors.
Okay.
Again, keeping it all under the guise of, we're supposed to be driving jobs.
Yep.
And revenue.
Right. Well, the blueprint has been a great guiding document. And so I think, I think when we hear things like, hey, we're ninety percent complete, we, I think for some of us, hey, man, it's been a great document. We want to make sure that we continue moving forward with that, whatever that looks like. So whatever that, even in our, you know, our, our work plan, it might be, how does that connect to the blueprint? So we have a good feel as to which sectors that connects with. But on the Sutter Health now, there is, you had mentioned earlier, E, there's an EIR for the Medical Center expansion. How large? Hospital?
So the property, I'm going to, I may not get the numbers exactly right, so maybe Edith can help me. If I remember right, the, the existing property that Sutter purchased is entitled for about a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of medical office and some retail. I think that's about right, right? Including a fifty-five-bed hospital, okay? That's the existing entitlement. The environmental impact report and the, the PD amendment that they have, they're pursuing goes to, I think, two hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of medical office and retail. It's a significant, it's a doubling, more than doubling the existing size of what's allowed there. Eliminating the FAR, it looks at parking, it does a pretty significant analysis. And we had some initial renderings that we've looked at. It, it looks amazing. Now we just got to get it to fruition.
Yes, I know that they have made, Sutter's made some big investments in Santa Clara and up in Oakland area. So hoping they'll make that big investment here. That doesn't really, for my questions here, I'm just looking at the time. I think we probably need to determine, how late do we want to go? Do we want to, nine thirty? Again, I know that, what I want to get to here is, is there anything we want to identify like we did in the last topic here that we want to do a deeper dive on? But we do need to get to public comment, and then there might be some other, some other conversation here. Do we want to go till ten? Do we want to wrap it up at ten? Do we want to say nine thirty? I'm looking for suggestion here.
Ten, I mean, I'm up to a ten.
Guys, okay with ten?
I'm fading. I vote for nine thirty, but.
I vote for nine thirty, too.
Nine thirty? You're good with nine thirty?
I guess.
Okay, yeah, fine, we'll go home early. Okay, nine thirty it is then. Let's, then let's go to public comment, and if we have some time left in, we'll, we'll wrap up with some final comments from everybody. Any public comments on this item?
Yes, we have Nick Gage.
Hurried up, Nick. That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and community. Again, my name is Dick Gage, you know, CEO, President of the Morgan Hill Chamber of Commerce. Now, tonight I want to reinforce a couple of things. First, I want to reinforce the chamber's full support of the economic blueprint, as was reaffirmed actually in 2024. But I also want to recognize a dedicated economic development team, both current and former, for their ongoing efforts to ensure long-term fiscal sustainability that in turn will enhance the quality of life for our businesses as well as our residents. You know, the past few years have brought significant economic uncertainty and market fluctuations across many of our business sectors. And I wanted to recognize as well, achieving in what, a ninety percent of the blueprint goals amidst those challenges speaks to strong leadership and deliberate priority-driven decisions that have been implemented. I apologize for stuttering here, I guess it is getting late. Looking ahead, the strategic priorities of innovation and advanced manufacturing, retail, tourism, and healthcare remain relevant as essential pillars for Morgan Hill as these sectors continue to drive our community's prosperity. So as we look to move forward, I'd say stay the course while remaining vigilant to emerging market shifts. Most importantly, maintain a high level of agility to redirect time and resources toward the four strategic sectors that will have the greatest impact on growth, workforce development, and economic mobility. And while I still have a few time, I may just add to Matt's comments. I think what's coming in front of you with the modernization of PDS will become an essential and a groundbreaking effort for our business community. And I would ask the council to spend time and attention to move quickly on approving what may be coming down the road in the near, near future. Just the example of the entertainment permit alone provides agility. It provides our, our business owners an opportunity to have the flexibility they don't have today to be able to act on decisions to improve their business. And I can tell you, with the five hundred and twenty-some members we have in the chamber representing well over eighty-five, eighty-five hundred full-time employees, this could be a game changer for us looking, looking forward. So although it's a late night and there's been a lot of information shared, I would say stay time and attention to economic development. It really is the vital piece of who we are in Morgan Hill. And more importantly, because we have a majority of our businesses that are small business owners, it impacts them directly. And right now, we're severely impacting many of our business sectors. So what we're talking about tonight is meaningful, it's impactful. And I'm going to ask the council to pay attention, as we always have, to be, to be able to move economic development forward. So thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nick. Anyone else?
Our next speaker is Mr. Mendoza. Good.
I just want to tell you, you guys are doing a great job here. I always considered this place like a mini Los Gatos. It's becoming one of those places, so great job. My main concern for me is that loading zone, you know, like every time people come and drop things, they cover my building, and they don't have a timing, you know? Like, they get there eleven, they get there at twelve, they get there at three P.M. And it covers my whole building, right? Maybe they, you guys can specify the place where they can unload their stuff and deliver, or maybe a time, you know, maybe from six in the morning to eight P.M., or six in the morning to ten P.M., something like that.
Thank you for that comment. We'll make note and, and we'll have someone circle back with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thanks for hanging out so long and, yeah, thanks. And we're wishing you all the luck in the world, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, we have on Zoom, Armando Benavides.
Benavides. Thank you, Armando.
We have one more speaker, Mayor.
One more speaker. Yeah, that's right, exactly. Just under the wire, John.
Hello, again, I'm sorry, I couldn't resist, this was just too much. So I've been involved and have observed our economic development department and the way the city council is, has been following their advice over about the last fifteen years. I remember not long ago, we had over a hundred years' worth of inventory in the commercial industrial arena. I don't think you can say that anymore because it's getting filled up. I think that we have to, as a community, we have to support all of you. I think that the, I hope the community out there understands that these are the professionals that know and understand what it takes, how long it takes, developing the relationships that don't happen overnight. There are relationships at play right now that go back years. These things are our investment in our future. We do need to protect our commercial industrial lands, which I think we are now dedicated to doing. But the main thing I would say is, for everybody here and the rest of the community is to understand that nothing happens overnight. There's a long-term vision. You have to be patient. We will be paying bills forever. We need the revenue. The revenue comes from our businesses. We lose money for every house built. We need to bring in revenue-generating businesses, and we need to keep our, we need to develop a viable job base. If I remember correctly, about seventeen thousand people leave Morgan Hill every day to better-paying jobs. And about seventeen thousand people come in to fill the not-so-great-paying jobs. So why don't we keep people here with jobs here? Let's pay our bills, let's be patient as a community and understand that our professionals are some of the best in the area. They're doing a great job, let's give them a hand. Let's, let's support them. And let's remember that one day, we're going to be so happy to see all those buildings full, all the parking lots full with employees, and people walking out of all the stores with grocery bags full, and they're going to have little doggy bags coming out of restaurants. Let's let it build, let's enjoy this, let's, let's celebrate what we have and look forward to the future. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, John. Please, Matt, go right ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it suddenly struck me how I really wanted to answer your question.
Oh. Please, go right ahead.
I think one of the best examples of our ability to be responsive to the needs of the community around economic development is the economic mobility and the Elevate Morgan Hill program that we ended up doing. That was not in the blueprint.
Yeah, great point, great point.
Through a grant that Edith identified, we pursued the grant, and it's built into a program that's now really another pillar of economic development between, and it's a pillar between economic development and housing.
That's a great point. Is that what she wrote on the paper that you couldn't read?
She did, she wrote economic.
But just.
We, we all, we all need a great coach.
Just came to me. Thank you for that, Matt, thank you, Edith. What I would like to do here beforehand is, I do want to, real quickly ask, is there, is there anything in this, in this area that you do want to do a deeper dive on that Michelle could jot down? Doesn't have to be a long explanation, but is there a topic or something? Yeah.
Hello, thank you. I, I think we need more sexy things in town.
Exactly. Are we still talking economic development?
Yes. And a few years ago, I, I, I brought, I knew somebody that wanted to build like in the, in the industrial area, in the commercial area, they wanted to put kind of, not a nightclub, but a venue. And that's not permitted in that area. So I think we need to look at those type of things that maybe change some of those restrictions. What about if we had, I know in one of the industrial areas, there's a sports gymnastics-type thing. More of those, you know, let's go axe-throwing, or let's go indoor golf, like, you know, what's that big golf thing?
Top golf.
Top golf, okay? So, I mean, but right now, you know, we're restricted by the zoning for those kind of things. So downtown's booming, I love it, and you've all done a great job. I mean, it's just, I'm so proud of Morgan Hill.
We were getting close to nine thirty. So what is your? So what is your?
Okay, look at changing the zoning in the industrial and commercial area to allow more entertainment. And I don't mean bands coming in or something like that.
Okay, so we'll dig deeper on that one. Anybody else, anything you want to?
You got what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, sure do.
I just want, you talked about the auto zoning. I'm hoping that that's looking at something adjacent to existing zoning rather than new zoning, which is what the whole other thing was about. I would love on this, you know, you have the Costco in here with the dollars, which I hate the slides like five-even. But anyway, because I don't, I mean, we're over-retailed and can we even get a cost? I'm like, if I could just kill the slide and get rid of that. But could we get something in there that reflects something that we would, a data center? Let's put a data center in there. And then the other one, you know, hoping to just get some, I would love to, I haven't heard anything about Ride Morgan Hill and this is super exciting that Ride Morgan Hill is here. This is like Vita Tay is coming to Morgan Hill. This is huge. And this is our first go at it. I'm disappointed it's not longer and better and through our, where it really should be. But this is going to be amazing and it will grow and grow and grow. And so I really hope to see some advertising and support. And, you know, I think that we should leverage some dollars to figure out how we.
We're getting close to 9:30?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no, no, you're good.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else send anything you want to do a little deeper dive?
Actually, no, no motion, do instead. I'm actually, I do love our downtown and I have, like everybody else, we notice the changes.
Councilmember, real quickly.
Sorry, I want to make a deeper dive.
Yep.
Into how, how do some of our, Nick, don't get mad. But sometimes I hear that the Friday night music series doesn't necessarily help our restaurants and some of our little businesses down there. So I'd like to see, you know, what we could do to maybe help our restaurants because I like going to them.
How do you, so, what do you, so, you got that, Michelle? Okay. Any? Sorry?
Yes, one more thing. Maybe how we can explore to have more festivals in Morgan Hill? I mean, I've gone to a few in our neighbors and they've done an amazing job. And there's a ton of like people coming out, vendors.
Okay, just quickly then.
Festivals.
Festivals, very good. The last item here, are there any future council-initiated agenda items? There being none, we are adjourned.